Good evening. Welcome to the Beverly Hills Board of Education regularly scheduled meeting on this Tuesday, June 13, 2023. I'm going to do the pledge today as all of our wonderful kiddies are on vacation.
Please stand, put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. Will you enlighten us with our mission and vision, please?
The BHUSD's mission statement, vision statement, and values. Our mission is educational excellence. Our vision is that our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world.
Thank you. And Mrs. Wells, can you read the community pledge?
The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty, listen and acknowledge differences in opinion, do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members, and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Wells. Can I get a motion, please, to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Marcus and Dr. Stern. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda is approved. Dr. Bregge, report of closed session action.
Yes, thank you, President Margot. The Board has voted in favor, five to zero, to approve OAH case number 2023-010798. And the Board has voted in favor, five to zero, to approve OAH case 2023-030916.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bregge. We have a couple of public hearings. So I will start with a public hearing. On the draft of the LCAP is now open at 5:31 PM. Pursuant to Ed Code Section 52060-52077, the governing board of each school district shall adopt a local control accountability plan on or before July 1, 2023. The LCAP shall be adopted with the district's annual budget. The public was invited to email their questions to Dustin Seaman and Mary Lou DeArcos. Mr. Seaman, have you received any questions or comments?
I have not.
The Board of Education has heard your comments, and we thank you very much for your input. The public hearing is now closed at 5:31 PM. That was remarkably fast. Thank you very much. And this will be voted on at the next meeting. Before we do the public hearing on the proposed budget, I would like to call up Mr. Guzman, who has a presentation for us.
Thank you, Mr. Board President Margot. Thank you, Board members and members of the community. It's a pleasure today to be able to present the proposed budget. I'm going to go ahead and share the screen here so you could follow along. And let me see if I remember. Okay, so if... All right. So go ahead and start here. I just want to start off by saying, you know, it really takes a team to be able to put together a budget. Well, a good budget. So it really does take a team. And I just want to say I'm very thankful for everyone in my team. I just want to give special thanks to Mary Lou DeArcos. She's our new Assistant Director of Fiscal. She's done a tremendous job to get this budget together with myself and Mark Karyalkas, our consultant. I'm just really thankful for our business and fiscal services staff. It's just been a lot of work, but yet they've been able to really get this work done. And I just am so thankful for them. I also want to thank Mr. Seaman, our Assistant Sub of Ed Services, who's pivotal in this whole process as well. We met, we discussed categorical programs, staffing, all sorts of things that you can imagine. And I'm just thankful for his input. Dr. Horvath as well, his input towards the budget in his department and everything else as far as staffing, getting all those numbers right, the SERP, all those good things. Thank you, Dr. Horvath. Ms. Collins Williams with Special Education and Student Services, we came together, looked at the budget, we looked at all the different areas, we worked together to get that done. And as you see through the list there, you know, and I'm thankful for Ms. Collins Williams for her input. And of course, Sandy, Sosi, Tim Ellis, Ken Haas, Will Karat, every one of the directors, Rebecca Starkins, Mark Mead, all of them really helped us with their specific departments to look at their budget. Tim looked at things and saw that we needed uniforms, we needed this, we needed that. He put things together. And so everyone had like a lot of input into this budget. You know, and of course, I just really, really thankful for our principals, Drew Stewart and Kim Decatur, Dr. Kelly Skon, Craig Buckbee, Sarah Kaber as well. I mean, they all also had input into their budget. They kind of did their budget. They looked at, I gave them an allocation, they allocated it by line. And so we had a really fun time. I mean, at least I had a fun time. We had a really fun time kind of putting the numbers in there. And it was just a really good experience. And I think that they now know their budget, they know where everything's at, and it's not like a puzzle anymore. And so we're really happy for that. And of course, our Cabinet, our leadership team, and all of our other BHUSD staff, anyone that I didn't mention, thank you for your support in getting this done. So going quickly here, because I know we want to, we have limited time, but we'll be going over the budget financial reporting cycle. We'll look at the legal requirements. We'll look at 45D budget revision, community-funded status, trends and major assumptions, estimated actuals, budget summary, most of your financial projections and reserves, other funds, and next steps. And don't worry, it won't take very long. It's just, it seems like a lot, but I just want to make sure we agendize that we did speak about it. So as you can see here, this is our budget financial reporting cycle. And currently, you know, we are at the adopted budget stage. We're currently at our proposed budget, and we're looking at that. And eventually, you're going to adopt that budget. And then we're going to start year-end closing, and the cycle continues. It's a continuous cycle that never stops of budget and financial reporting. So that's where we are right now. And we're excited because it's a new year, and we're wrapping up the old year. So it's just a really good place to be. So why are we doing this? Well, we have a legal requirement to first hold a hearing, hold a public hearing conducted in accordance with Ed Code. And the budget to be adopted has to be presented in that format. So we have to have a hearing first. And this has to all happen before July 1, on or before July 1 of each year. So we're well in our time to be compliant with the legal requirements. However, we do have a 45D budget revision option. If, for instance, so the 2324 State Budget Act hasn't been signed yet from the governor. They're still like cashing out where everything's going to land. And so we are still having an opportunity to adjust our budget within 45 days of the governor's signature. So I do anticipate us having some revisions at the August 8 board meeting, which is the first opportunity we'll have, you know, to be able to show revisions. So we do have some time to revise our budget based on, you know, some significant adjustments that are made between now and the governor's signature. Now, we are a community-funded district, and what exactly does that mean? And you've seen this slide a thousand times, I presume. But essentially, there's, we are funded mainly through our property taxes. Most districts are funded through a variation of state aid, property taxes, and EPA funds, which is the Economic Protection Act, Educational Protection Act. And so essentially, for us, we're mainly funded by property taxes. That's the biggest chunk of our funding, and that's why we're community-funded. What does that mean? When you're a state aid district, your ADA, your average daily attendance drives your funding, received under the local control funding formula. Your demographics drive supplemental concentration grant funding. Property tax changes don't really impact your, what you receive, the grand total of things. And so what really matters for revenue is ADA. Whereas a community-funded district, changes in ADA don't greatly affect our unrestricted revenues. So if, you know, that's something to note. But changes in property taxes do impact our unrestricted. So if property taxes fluctuate, it's going to have an impact. And that's why sometimes you'll see in our reports that we show a deficit, right? And we talk about deficit spending. But a lot of times, what ends up happening is our property taxes come in higher than what we expected, and then the deficit spending kind of goes away, per se. And so, you know, it's more like a projected deficit. But we still have to be able to put things in paper, operate in a budget. But reality is, you know, at the end of the day, we do get more funding most of the time. Now, I can't say that this happens 100% of the time, though. So it's something that we have to track throughout the year. And as we get closer towards the end of next year, we'll be able to know where our revenues are. So that's really the difference and the kind of dynamics that we have to deal with as a community-funded district, where we start with something, but then if the revenues come in higher, then it looks like, you know, we budgeted wrong. But no, we didn't. It's just that the revenues came in higher. And that's just something that is different from a state aid district, which is a pretty set number. You know what you're going to get that year. Whereas community-funded is very different. So we'll be going over some trends and major assumptions. And for this part, I'm going to ask Ms. Mary Lou DeArcos, our Assistant Director of Fiscal Services, if she can present some of these slides. Mary Lou?
Thank you, Rafael. Good evening, everyone. We are going to be going over some of the trends relating to our budget. As Rafael mentioned, we are a property taxed, community-funded district, and so majority of our revenue comes from property taxes. As of P2, this is the information that we were able to obtain. And so we are projecting 64.7 in revenue, sorry, excuse me, 66.9 in revenue. And we're assuming a 4% increase in the years to come, increasing to 69.3 for the 2425 school year and 71.9 for the 2526 school year. Again, these are all projections as of P2. Something else that we take into consideration is our enrollment. As of right now, we do foresee a decline in enrollment. However, these numbers are not final, and we will present you with new numbers at the next meeting. Because, you know, we still have incoming enrollment and different information that we have to include in our budget before we approve it at the next meeting. But right
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda is approved. Dr. Bregge, report of closed session action.
Yes, thank you, President Margot. The Board has voted in favor, five to zero, to approve OAH case number 2023-010798. And the Board has voted in favor, five to zero, to approve OAH case 2023-030916.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bregge. We have a couple of public hearings. So I will start with the public hearing. On the draft of the LCAP is now open at 5:31 PM. Pursuant to Ed Code Section 52060-52077, the governing board of each school district shall adopt a local control accountability plan on or before July 1st, 2023. The LCAP shall be adopted with the district's annual budget. The the public was invited to email their questions to Dustin Seaman and Mary Lou Diarcos. Mr. Seaman, have you received any questions or comments?
I have not.
The Board of Education has heard your comments, and we thank you very much for your input. The public hearing is now closed at 5:31 PM. That was remarkably fast. Thank you very much, and this will be voted on at the next meeting. Before we do the public hearing on the proposed budget, I would like to call up Mr. Guzman, who has a presentation for us.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Board President Margot. Thank you, Board members and members of the community. It's a pleasure today to be able to present the proposed budget. I'm going to go ahead and share the screen here so you could follow along. And let me see if I remember. Okay, so if... All right. So go ahead and start here. I just want to start off by saying, you know, it really takes a team to be able to put together a budget. Well, a good budget. So it really does take a team. And I just want to say I'm very thankful for everyone in my team. I just want to give special thanks to Mary Lou Diarcos. She's our new Assistant Director of Fiscal. She's done a tremendous job to get this budget together with myself and Mark Karyalkas, our consultant. I'm just really thankful for our business and fiscal services staff. It's just been a lot of work, but yet they've been able to really get this work done, and I just am so thankful for them. I also want to thank Mr. Seaman, our Assistant Sub of Ed Services, who's pivotal in this whole process as well. We met, we discussed categorical programs, staffing, all sorts of things that you can imagine. And I'm just thankful for his input. Dr. Horvath as well, his input towards the budget in his department and everything else as far as staffing, getting all those numbers right, the SERP, all those good things. Thank you, Dr. Horvath. Ms. Collins Williams with Special Education and Student Services. We came together, looked at the budget, we looked at all the different areas, we worked together to get that done. And as you see through the list there, you know, and I'm thankful for Ms. Collins Williams for her input. And of course Sandy, Sosi, Tim Ellis, Ken Haas, Will Karat. Every one of the directors, Rebecca Starkins, Mark Mead, all of them really helped us with their specific departments to look at their budget. Tim looked at things and saw that we needed uniforms, we needed this, we needed that. He put things together. And so everyone had like a lot of input into this budget. You know, and of course, I just really, really thankful for our principals, Drew Stewart and Kim Decatur, Dr. Kelly Skon, Craig Buckby, Sarah Kaber as well. I mean, they all also had input into their budget. They kind of did their budget. They looked at, I gave them an allocation, they allocated it by line, and so we had a really fun time. I mean, at least I had a fun time. We had a really fun time kind of putting the numbers in there. And it was just a really good experience, and I think that they now know their budget. They know where everything's at, and it's not like a puzzle anymore. And so we're really happy for that. And of course, our cabinet, our leadership team, and all of our other BHUSD staff, anyone that I didn't mention, thank you for your support in getting this done. So going quickly here, because I know we want to, we have limited time. But we'll be going over the budget financial reporting cycle, we'll look at the legal requirements, we'll look at 45D budget revision, community funded status, trends and major assumptions, estimated actuals, budget summary, multi-year financial projections and reserves, other funds, and next steps. And don't worry, it won't take very long. It's just, it seems like a lot, but I just want to make sure we agendize that we did speak about it. So as you can see here, this is our budget financial reporting cycle. And currently, you know, we are at the adopted budget stage. We're currently at our proposed budget, and we're looking at that, and eventually you're going to adopt that budget. And then we're going to start year-end closing, and the cycle continues. It's a continuous cycle that never stops of budget and financial reporting. So that's where we are right now, and we're excited because it's a new year, and we're wrapping up the old year. So it's just a really good place to be. So why are we doing this? Well, we have a legal requirement to first hold a hearing, hold a public hearing conducted in accordance with Ed Code. And the budget to be adopted has to be presented in that format. So we have to have a hearing first, and this has to all happen before July 1st, on or before July 1st of each year. So we're well in our time to be compliant with the legal requirements. However, we do have a 45D budget revision option. If, for instance, so the 2324 State Budget Act hasn't been signed yet from the governor. They're still like cashing out where everything's going to land. And so we are still having an opportunity to adjust our budget within 45 days of the governor's signature. So I do anticipate us having some revisions at the August 8th Board Meeting, which is the first opportunity we'll have, you know, to be able to show revisions. So we do have some time to revise our budget based on, you know, some significant adjustments that are made between now and the governor's signature. Now, we are a community-funded district, and what exactly does that mean? And you've seen this slide a thousand times, I presume. But essentially, there's, we are funded mainly through our property taxes. Most districts are funded through a variation of state aid, property taxes, and EPA funds, which is the Economic Protection Act, Educational Protection Act. And so essentially, for us, we're mainly funded by property taxes. That's the biggest chunk of our funding, and that's why we're community-funded. What does that mean? When you're a state aid district, your ADA, your average daily attendance drives your funding, received under the local control funding formula. Your demographics drive supplemental concentration grant funding. Property tax changes don't really impact your, what you receive, the grand total of things. And so what really matters for revenue is ADA. Whereas a community-funded district, changes in ADA don't greatly affect our unrestricted revenues. So if, you know, that's something to note. But changes in property taxes do impact our unrestricted. So if property taxes fluctuate, it's going to have an impact. And that's why sometimes you'll see in our reports that we show a deficit, right? And we talk about deficit spending. But a lot of times what ends up happening is our property taxes come in higher than what we expected, and then the deficit spending kind of goes away per se. And so, you know, it's more like a projected deficit. But we still have to be able to put things in paper, operate in a budget. But reality is, you know, at the end of the day, we do get more funding most of the time. Now, I can't say that this happens 100% of the time, though. So it's something that we have to track throughout the year. And as we get closer towards the end of next year, we'll be able to know where our revenues are. So that's really the difference and the kind of dynamics that we have to deal with as a community-funded district, where we start with something, but then if the revenues come in higher, then it looks like, you know, we budgeted wrong, but no, we didn't. It's just that the revenues came in higher. And that's just something that is different from a state aid district, which is a pretty set number. You know what you're going to get that year. Whereas community-funded is very different. So we'll be going over some trends and major assumptions. And for this part, I'm going to ask Ms. Mary Lou Diarcos, our Assistant Director of Fiscal Services, if she can present some of these slides. Mary Lou?
Good evening, everyone. We are going to be going over some of the trends relating to our budget. As Rafael mentioned, we are a property taxed, community-funded district, and so majority of our revenue comes from property taxes. As of P2, this is the information that we were able to obtain. And so we are projecting 64.7 in revenue. Sorry. Excuse me, 66.9 in revenue. And we're assuming a 4% increase in the years to come, increasing to 69.3 for the 2425 school year and 71.9 for the 2526 school year. Again, these are all projections as of P2. Something else that we take into consideration is our enrollment. As of right now, we do foresee a decline in enrollment. However, these numbers are not final, and we will present you with new numbers at the next meeting. Because, you know, we still have incoming enrollment and different information that we have to include in our budget before we approve it at the next meeting. But right now, we are estimating 3,097 for the 2324 school year and a little bit lower for the 25 through the 26 school years at 3,300, sorry, 3,003 students. The general fund salaries, we see a projection of increasing to 51.9. This is based on the 2.5 salary increase. And then we see a little bit of a decline for the 2425 school year, and we're projecting it to go a little bit up to 52.4 in the 2526 school year. Our per student expenditures, we also foresee it increasing. But again, we have to take into consideration the enrollment, property taxes, CPI. And with that, we would be able to project correctly for the upcoming years how much our per student cost will be, but we do foresee a little bit of an increase. We have 31,178 for the 2324 school year. And then 31,853 for the 2425 school year, and a little bit higher at 32,435 for the 2526 school year. For our sources of general fund revenue, if we were to imagine, we have for each dollar that we receive, 72 cents comes from our local Beverly Hills property taxes. 17 cents of that dollar come from other local revenues, mostly our JPA. However, there are other donations, other gifts that we receive, and so that would be 17 cents of that dollar. 8 cents comes from the other state of California funds. So state funds like EPA, basic aid lottery, and other state grants. And 3 cents of that revenue comes from federal funds, our COVID-19 funds, title programs, and any other categorical federal funds that we receive. And our uses of the general fund revenues, if we, again, had, for every dollar that we spend, for every dollar that we receive, 78 cents of that goes to employee salary and benefits. 3 cents go to books and supplies, and 18 cents goes to services and other operating expenses. 1 cent of that dollar would be for our deferred maintenance and our technology refresh transfers. With that, I'll hand it over to Rafael again for major assumptions.
All right. So whenever you put together a budget, you have to take into account certain assumptions, like what are you assuming is going to happen? So for instance, you have COLA assumptions, meaning the cost of living allowance assumptions. You have different things that we have to take into account. So we have to present these to you all. And really, for when it pertains to COLA, it really doesn't impact us as what a normal school district. Again, we are funded mainly through property taxes. You know, you're seeing there that for 2324, districts around us are receiving an 8.22% COLA. We are not. But yet, we can use that assumption for the other items that are outside of just our regular state funding, like for example, special education. We should be seeing 8.22% towards that, or other programs that are more on the categorical side that this will apply for. So, but we wanted to show those assumptions of where we're getting our dollars. These are provided to us by School Services of California, and who is kind of the most prolific agency that we have for school assumptions in the state of California. In regards to other assumptions, we did factor in CPI, and we used that at about 3.54% for next year, and 3% the year after, and then 2.64%. We also have lottery assumptions there that you could see on the screen, our mandated block grant assumptions. These are all, again, coming from what School Services of California has put together for us through conversations with the state. Of particular importance for us, as we can see and worry, is what we're seeing with Calsters and Calpers. As you can see, for next year, Calpers is going from 25.37 to 26.68, and then after that to 27.7, and then finally to 28.3. This is, you know, for every dollar that a person makes, you know, there's a charge to that dollar. So it's a really significant increase throughout the year is what we're seeing. Unemployment insurance, it's staying relatively flat, you know, for 2324, 2425, but we did see a decrease from 2223 to 2324. But it's a, it's not, although it looks like a huge difference, 0.50 to 0.05%, it's still a 0.5%, so it's not like a huge pot of savings. But, you know, proportionally, it is a large savings, but it's, when you look at the total, it's really not. And then minimum wage, we're showing those impacts there as well. So major assumptions for revenue, we did, as Mary Lou mentioned, it was a 4.5% increase to our property tax revenue for 2324. And for 2425 and 2526, we're projecting a 4% increase. When it comes to interest revenues, we did factor in, you know, that projections are going to be lower, about 25% less in 2223. You know, we're, we'll figure that out as time goes on at first interim. We'll come back to this and see if that really is going to materialize. Now, we did recognize a deeper reduction in arts, music, and instructional materials block grant. We brought that to the Board at the last meeting. Basically, from the May revision, we received information that it's going to be reduced by 51%. Now, mind you, we already received a lot of that money, so. And then the learning, loss, recovery, emergency block grant, that one is projected to reduce by about 32%. So this is all what the governor is telling us. So this is where, like, it becomes difficult to budget, right? Because you get told a number, and then it gets reduced by 30%. That's a very hard pill to swallow, but that's where we are. And, you know, at the May revision, they included this slide there. And as you can see, here's the superintendent coming over to the budget analyst, and the superintendent says, can we start spending the learning, recovery, emergency block grant? And the budget analyst says, yeah, sure, we have the cash. And then the CBO right there says, hey, hold your horses. The May revision said, we're cutting this at 30%. So this is kind of what's happening. Now, it's easier for that CBO, you know, but essentially, like, we're seeing that happen to us. It impacts us. And I like this slide too, from the May revision, where you have Governor Newsom there, right? And it says balancing the budget is on an imperfect science. But he's taken the arts and music funding and the learning recovery grant to balance the LCFF. So it's, yeah, it's what we're seeing. Unfortunately for us, though, like, we don't see the other impact, right? Because we're basic aids or community-funded, so our property taxes are not going to change. What we will see is a decrease to both of those programs. And other school districts see the decrease, but then they'll see their LCFF dollars increase, right? We don't see that. So it's kind of like a double whammy for us, unfortunately. And when it comes to expenses, our certificate and classified salaries do include a 2.5%. We did include some reductions in FTEs that we've presented to the Board in the past. And of course, benefits increased as well in accordance with what was negotiated. And so we're seeing that, and we've also included the assumptions of the increased per rate in the following three fiscal years. Materials and supplies, we budgeted at CPI that we had mentioned before, about 3.44%. As we look forward, you know, our financing resources, we did include $852,000 for the deferred maintenance fund. And we did include a $500,000 allotment for the special reserve fund for a technology refresh. And so this is the first year, and I'm very thankful to the Board for starting that because you'll see the benefit of it in about three years when we don't have any more bond funds, because our, you know, we've completed a lot of our projects, and now we need to fund technology out of, you know, general fund. This is going to come in very, very, very helpful. So thank you to the Board for allowing us to include that. In other assumptions, I thought it's really important to include, to make the Board aware again that we did include the adjustment that we had at the audit for fair market value of cash in county. I don't want to get into a long conversation about that, but essentially, they identified that the fair market value of the cash in county dropped by about 1.5 million. And so we had to move that money to an object code called 9111. I know that's kind of hard to understand, but it's there, but it just got moved. I don't want you to think that we lost those dollars. We did not. It's just that per GASB 31, if the fair market value of your cash is reduced, you have to move those monies out of your reserve into what's called like a 9111 account, because, you know, that's just kind of the way that GASB is forcing us to go. We've never really had to do this in the past, but because of how the market has played out, this is the first time we're having to actually do this. And so the increase or decrease in the fair market value, you'll get very familiar with that year after year. We'll have to do that when we close the books every year, so you'll see that number fluctuate coming in and out. Hopefully, this year, we won't see a decrease there. But at the end of the day, we're not losing those monies. It's just that they can't make up part of our reserve because they're not being recognized as the fair market value of those, of the cash in hand. So as you can see here, you know, we have like a great, we're experiencing this great tsunami of cost pressures. For many, for many school districts, it's expiring attendance relief, it's expiring one-time funds and pension costs. For us, it's property tax fluctuations, expiring one-time funds and pension costs. They're all coming, and we have to be able to prepare for that and, you know, and get ready for just being able to position ourselves well in the midst of all of these changes. For estimated actuals, so when you're looking at your adopted budget, there's a component of the estimated actuals. That's what we're assuming we're going to end the year. For estimated actuals, as you can see on the screen there, we're looking at ending essentially in our revenue side with $94.3 million in revenue. And you can see some of the changes there that we are experiencing. The one to note is the beginning fund balance. Again, that is due to the fair market value adjustment that we had to make. But mainly, everything else stayed about, is pretty consistent with, in regards to what we projected at second interim. When it comes to the expenses, you could see that we're going from 95.7 million in expenses to 95.1. So the change there essentially was about 548,000 less in expenses. And so our ending fund balance is looking at to be 21.5 million is what we're estimating to end this year. Now, we still have another report, the unaudited actuals. And basically, at that report, we'll be able to see where we truly end the year. But you could see here where we're seeing that deficit spending, the projected deficit spending of 821, 821,000. But again, if the property taxes come in higher, then that number might be less or not exist. So it's important to note that, but for now, we have that projection. For next year's budget, which is what we're all waiting for here, is essentially, we're looking at our revenues being $92.4 million. And, you know, mainly in our unrestricted dollar side, 67.5, and then 24.8 in the restricted, for a total of 92.4 million. And as you can see, the majority of our revenues is coming from property tax revenue. When it comes to expenses, you could see our total expenditures that we're projecting on our unrestricted dollars are about 70.3 million, and then 26.1 million in our restricted, for a grand total of 96.5. And this is where we're seeing essentially altogether an operational impact of a projected deficit of 4.1. But again, as I mentioned before, as we start the year, make adjustments, that number will go up or down. And as we start getting more clarity on our property taxes, that number may go up or down. So it's something that we do have to look at, though, that, you know, it's kind of telling us a story, but we have to start making some adjustments as time goes. But it is really important to note that it is a projection that's more volatile for us as a community-funded school district. In regards to our multi-year financial projections, we're looking at basically, at the end of this year, ending at 17.4 million. And then next year at 15.3, and the following year, 14.1 million. When we look at percentages of where we are on the unrestricted side, which is the more, for me, it's, I always say, the unrestricted side is probably your most important side for you to look at as a Board member, as a community member. This is where, you know, a district will go up or down. Now, you still want to look at your restricted, it's really important, but your unrestricted is so pivotal. And as you can see here, our ending balance, 15.4, but we have Fund 17. So we're looking at $27 million in our reserve, which is about a 28% reserve at the end of next year, is what we're projecting. In 2425, we're projecting 25.9 million as the total reserve, including Fund 17. And that is then 27% reserves. And in 2526, we're projecting 25.6 million reserve, including Fund 17, which means the reserve level drops to 26.3. But again, this can all, this isn't meant to be, you know, for us to meet in three years and see if that was the actual number. These are just projections of what we're thinking will happen in the future. For other funds, just real quickly, we'll go through this. Fund 8 is ending next year at about $800,000 is what we're projecting. Fund 13, our cafeteria fund, again, we're looking at it being able to self-sustain. So that's great news. In fact, we'll have some news for you soon about Fund 13 and some changes that we're looking at there. The food services contribution, as you can see, is non-existent next year because, again, it's self-sustaining, and we're very thankful for that. Fund 14, we're looking at that fund essentially, you know, ending at about 375,000 next year, but we're looking at some pretty good expenditures, about $1 million next year. Fund 17, you're seeing that grow from 11.0 to 11.7. The bulk of that growth is the increase for the technology deferred, I'm sorry, for the technology refresh plan that we're doing. For our Fund 21, we're seeing, you know, about $80 million in expenses to end the year at 82.7. Fund 25, our developer fees, we're looking at ending 2223 at about 1.7. And in 2324, we're looking at being at around 748,000 in expenses if we expend what we're thinking for next year. Fund 35, you're seeing that one went up pretty dramatically from second interim. It's at 16.2, but those are your seismic mitigation funds that we've always been talking about. Well, the good news is we finally have the cash. It's finally here. So, you know, it's good news. We'll eventually move that over to Fund 21, or else I mean, it's going to be really upset with me, so I don't want that to happen. Fund 67, we're seeing that one also go up to about 1.6. And then Fund 71, we do see that contribution there for OPEB. And so we're looking at OPEB being at 7.3 million next year. That's without all the interest that might occur. Next steps, approval of the adopted budget, hopefully on June 27th, if it suits the Board. And then we're going to continue to monitor ESSER expenses. We do have some few ESSER expenses remaining. So we have to make sure we continue to monitor that. We're going to continue to monitor property tax receipts and also external economic factors. We have to look at how the economy reacts, how that impacts property taxes and all those things. We also have to be mindful of any legal settlements that might come our way or legal issues that we might have to face in the next couple of months or the next couple of years. And of course, we have to begin to focus on year-end closing. So thank you all so much. That is the adopted budget, or the proposed budget for next year. Thank you.
Okay, colleagues. So the public hearing on the 2023-2024 proposed budget is now open at 5:57 PM. Pursuant to Ed Code Section 52060-52077, the governing board of each school district shall adopt a budget on or before July 1st, 2023. The public was invited to email their questions to Mr. Guzman. Mr. Guzman, have you received any questions or comments?
No, I have not, President Margot.
Thank you. The Board of Education has heard your comments, and we thank you very much for your input. The public hearing is now closed at 5:58 PM. This is a voting item for approval at the next meeting, so we can do all of our questions and discussions at that point. Thank you very much. That closes that public hearing. And we will move on to our consent calendar.
I'll make a motion for approval of the consent calendar minus item Z.
I added a couple too. I added items, I believe, U and F.
Is there a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll go to item F. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the GOAL book contract.
All second.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Wells and Dr. Stern, and who had questions on this?
I had, you have questions on that? Nope. On, there was an item on there about four schools and one school that they are not using the GOAL book. They've decided that they will not renew the contract for three of the schools, I believe, and that one of the schools is still using it. I wondered if that was referring to the high school that still uses GOAL book. I didn't know, I was wondering which school that was.
It's the middle school.
Middle school?
Yes. And it was a direct request from the administration at the school to continue it, continue it. The staff members do use it.
They're using it pretty extensively, then?
Yes, they are. As I indicated in the response to the questions, I pulled usage reports and reviewed them by site by staff member.
Okay, I just wanted it to be out there that what school it was that was still using it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for your information.
You're welcome.
So this is a renewal?
Yes, we've had this program for the last three years.
And it's a reduction?
It's a reduction. It's a reduction based on usage.
Thank you.
Can I make a, just a comment about that, the word renewal? Sometimes when we see these, sometimes the word renewal isn't there. So we assume sometimes it could be something new and we would not possibly think to look back and see if it was there before. So when it's possible, could we perhaps have the word renewal in anything? Most of the times it is, but sometimes it isn't, and I think it would be helpful.
I think that's a great point. And Mr. Margot and I, when we were meeting to talk about the agenda, we had the same exact discussion. So it's something that I'll talk to my team about as far as some of that key language so that the board is aware if something is an annual basis or if something is new.
Thank you.
It's a great point.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine U. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for approval of professional services agreement with Catherine Branley.
All second.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Wells and Dr. Stern. Who had a question on this?
I had the question on it. Thank you. I wanted to, this was Title I funds, but it was to improve the CER program. I wonder if you could tie those two together so that it would be more understanding to the community what that's all about. I'd appreciate it.
Yes, Title I funds, am I on? Title I funds can be utilized for teacher professional development to support students that are low socioeconomic. So when at Beverly Vista, we have identified based off the CER program, a group of students that both meet Title I standards but also need the additional academic support. And so we are bringing in somebody to assist our teachers, especially because some of our teachers have retired that were in those positions of intervention, to strengthen our intervention program to support those Title I students. So that's why we're using the Title I funds for the professional development to strengthen and increase what we've identified as educational gaps through using our CERs.
Okay, so this was basically, CER is also part of the strategic plan, as I recall, so that this would be in the evaluation of the program, we found a weakness and we're using Title I.
We found the students that need the support based off using the CER data and that this is to help support those students.
Do we have any other results? I know this may be a little bit out of order, but any other results on that CER evaluation process or can we get that at another time? How the kids?
Yeah, Dr. Scott had did a presentation during our strategic plan. She closed out and so we can go back and bring that section of the strategic plan presentation on May 2nd back to you guys, where she did present the pros and cons of the CERs in the kind of the initial, the quarter one administrator of administration of the CERs all the way up to quarter four. And so we can bring that back.
I think the public would be interested in hearing about that because it's a basically a fairly new program and I would like to see that.
Yeah, I think that with the strategic plan coming up as far as some of the planning, there's been, you know, there's been some some time in between where, you know, scores are starting to become available. There's other data that's going to be coming available before our planning meeting in July. So we'll do an update for you because it's going to be really important at that planning time to really use all the information we have to then project for then the next year. So that's a great point. And there might be some other things as well that, you know, some time has gone past.
The result of testing and so on.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hi, just a quick question. At the middle school level, how how do you identify the students who need support? Is it that they're getting Cs, Ds and Fs, Ds and Fs only? How are you identifying who needs an intervention?
Yeah, it's a great question. So a multitude, so we, the board had done an adoption around the NWEA recently. We used to use a program called Renaissance Star 360. And NWEA is the one that we replaced based off our strategic plan and collaboration with other high performing school districts, utilizing that as the diagnostic within the first 10 to 15 days of school. And we did this in the past as well, but we use the Renaissance. So that's our first kind of line of defense to identify students that might need additional support outside of what's happening within the classroom. So classroom teachers can also make recommendations to their assistant principal or school counselor. In addition to then, we start to look at our summative assessments, like the CASP data starting to roll in. And so we're starting to identify students already just as we're starting to get that information. We're piecing that together with classroom grades, recommendations from teachers and other assessments that we have in place, like common assessments, like everybody takes the same eighth grade algebra, if you're in algebra, the same final. And so the results of even those final exams, we're using our summer workshop time to discuss those students and pull all those pieces of information together to ensure that we start the fall, that we already have those students placed in the proper interventions and then monitor that progress in hopes that they graduate out of those intervention pieces and then identify any other students that something may have happened mid, you know, mid semester and it's changed their learning process. So how do we get more wraparound services to them? But we use multiple data points, not just the CERs by any means. This is just kind of helping us understand the CER process and then making sure that, you know, we had two former intervention teachers at BVMS graduate or retire. So we have two new staff members coming on board. And so we want to make sure that they're fully trained and prepped to step in that first day as well.
Can a parent request intervention? Like if they believe that, you know, their student needs help and it's not being identified?
Absolutely. So I always recommend anybody in the community, especially as you're receiving. So I just sent out communication on Monday around CASP scores. At the bottom, there's two caveats. So one around the LPAC scores would say, please contact your English language coordinator. So each site, so if your student is an English learner, identified as an English learner, that's kind of like their special education case manager in a sense, where it's their one go-to person that can always make sure that the translator is available to the parents to help them understand the test scores, but also help them understand the intervention processes that we provide. And then the CASP letter says to contact either your school counselor if you want further information on interpretation, understanding, but then also intervention. So they would make that recommendation directly to that school counselor that they're either assigned to 612, because there's multiple at the secondary level, or you know, their elementary-based school counselor, assistant principal and principal too, or even ad services staff, so they could reach out directly to me as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seaman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to ratify the purchase order, report number 21 for 2022, 2023.
All second.
Thank you very much. You have a question?
I pulled this item.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells.
I wanted to ask Raphael a question. It came up in this, in this report, we also had the change order reports and there was a question that came up again about Sandy Pringle. And I just wanted to revisit this again from our last meeting when we approved the change order. And I asked Raphael if he could just clarify for us, previously when we had TCDS doing our inspector, our DSA inspector services, if he could compare for us what we would have paid for the same services had we not changed to Sandy Pringle and what the difference between the two are.
Yeah, so I went back and I asked our team to just take a look at this. It's kind of difficult because you're looking at two different styles of operation. But when you look at the actual rates, if I just say number of hours times rate, I'm looking at, you know, for instance, at B3 before, we would, we would have seen probably about $360,000 more in the current year due to the increased rates. So the, the other rate for the previous, for the previous inspector was about $200. The rate now was was about half of that. So essentially, you're looking at, any number that you look at, it's about half the cost. Now, mind you, that's if you're looking, if you're assuming that they're working the exact same number of hours. That's the assumption that we had to make. For Elrodale for this year, that's about $276,000, the difference between if we had the same number of hours for the previous inspector versus the inspector we have now, it's a delta of about 276,000. And so that's what we're seeing at the two different projects.
So combined, it would have cost 636,000 more if we had stayed with TCDS? Based on the hourly rates?
It would have been with, so you're looking at?
Would the inspector record work for TCDS?
It would have been about, yeah, 639 is what we had, is what we're looking at. But again, that's if we had the same number of hours times the rate. So basically, you're looking at half of the cost.
Right.
But because the rate is half.
Right. So I just wanted to clarify that the savings would, could look like we saved 639,000 by switching to Sandy Pringle.
Yes.
Based on hourly rates.
If you compare the work, yes. So if they were in the same amount of work, then yes, you would have seen, you would have experienced more costs.
Thank you.
Are you counting one inspector or all the inspectors?
I'm counting the, all of the inspectors.
So multiple inspectors?
Yes.
And also just to clarify, oh, go ahead.
But I'm doing it based on hours. So the total amount of hours that, so this is why it's a little difficult because it's two different entities, right? So if you look at the total number of hours that Sandy Pringle worked and multiply that out times their rate, and you take that same number of hours and multiply it by the previous inspector.
TCDS rate.
Then you essentially would get six, for instance, for B3 before, we experienced 308,000 in costs with with those hours. If we apply those same hours to the previous rate, you're looking at 672,000. That's where we're getting a difference. For B3 before and then Elrodale, it's a delta of 276, 276,000.
Right, but what, the only thing I'm confused about, and I'm not arguing with your numbers, is the, the prior year under, under the other inspector, the whole year combined both projects was, I think around, let's say 600,000. So how did, how could it get to be twice?
Different year.
Because basically the rate is twice. So that's, that's, it's double the rate. And so that's why you're going to see like the difference there. Because the total that we have so far for this year for Sandy Pringle, for example, at Elrodale is a total of $247,000. If I take that, those number of hours and apply it to the TCDS rate, you're looking at, you know, 523,000. But again, it's a very, it's just hours times rate and that's a delta of 276,000.
But that was a, that was?
2223.
Those are, they're separate inspectors at Elrodale, correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So because the prior model had just one doing both campuses.
Actually, no, they had two. They had Joe Clevenger.
He had an assistant, yeah.
So I, and I, like I said, that's why it's hard to really compare. But what I, what I would say is essentially we have, we had to do this. So, so there was X number of hours that we needed worked at each site. That's just to just make it simple, right? It's kind of a complicated comparison, but we needed, so for instance, at Elrodale, we needed a total of 2,500 hours of inspection services thus far. So those 2,500 hours of inspection services cost $247,000. If I take that number, 2579, and multiply that times the 203 rate, you're seeing that would jump up to 523. Now, I can't argue what or who or I don't know what that would look like.
It was the same structure though, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay. Great, thank you for that.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to your report, Dr. Bergy.
Thank you, President Margot. Do you guys have my screen up?
Okay.
Isn't that weird?
Sorry, folks, just a little technical thing. So how about that Horseman Chase structure, huh? How about that? School Employees Association of California Proposal to Perform Job Description Revisions.
That's weird. Did you, did you guys change that?
Oh, we're calling the big guns now.
Oh, that's why. You guys changed it, okay.
We are a slave to our technology overlords, aren't we?
I do, I do. So the link changed, so I did, not aware of that, but. Now I am.
Abakai for everyone.
Okay. Hold on. Let me do my stuff video. Just mute and then. Oh. Let me make sure that I have.
The suspense is killing me.
Okay, let me, oh, I guess it doesn't matter.
How about them nuggets?
Okay. Should we do something else or? No, it's, 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 it's good with the new link. That was just changed. So I think we're good.
Here we go.
Okay, it's really going to be worth the wait because it's nice and short tonight. So good evening, everyone. I just want to start off with some thank yous. You know, we attend promotions and our graduation ceremony. You know, people get to show up and celebrate, but people oftentimes don't really know everything that goes into our events. We have parent planning groups and committees that play a large part in each of our events, security, our school administration, and of course, our students. So I just want to just say thank you to our entire community and to our board for, you know, not just a graduation and promotion, but in the 14 years of being a superintendent, I've never had a Board of Education that has attended as many events as this sitting current board. And I just want to thank you for that. It's, that's unusual. And I know that's a big part of our culture, but you know, people really know who you are in our community, our students, and I just want to say thank you for that. These events that occurred our last week of school, just, just really well-done events from our student speakers. This is not an event where somebody has just handed a certificate. There is a lot of purpose, there's a lot of celebration and a lot of planning. I mean, these, the planning that's involved happens, you know, the beginning of the year for this culminating event at the end of the year. So I just want to thank everyone from Hawthorne and just quickly, Horseman. Then our promotion at Beverly Vista Middle School. And ending with our graduation ceremony at the high school. And not only for the class of 2023, but we had this awesome opportunity to be able to, you know, look back and really reach out to some of our 2020 grads that even though Mr. Mead and I, I think we visited 100 homes and we hand delivered diplomas during COVID. And we have a lot of those amazing pictures to, to, you know, solidify that event in our, our history. We're glad to be part of it. But it was really nice to be able to see our students come back and just how grown up they are and, and it was just such a pleasure for us. Just want to talk about one thing really tonight. It's summer, but I want to talk about our Behavior and Accountability Advisory Panel, which is 25. which is twenty-five different people. I have the pleasure of co-hosting with Ms. Laura Collins-Williams, um, also with Ms. Rebecca Starkins, um, Mr. Mark Mead. Um, and this is a group of twenty-five people that are in our community, uh, including Elena Castenan, who's here. Um, you know, we've met now four different times, so really every week for a month. And, you know, this is the third time that I've put together a community group. So through our Future Focus Schools Group, through our Return to Learn Group. Um, and, you know, this is just such a beneficial experience because, you know, as, as we heard Rafael talking about how the budget's a story, you know, this type of experience is a story too. And the people that are on this panel with us all have a story to share. Um, and really from every professional area, from attorneys to doctors to, um, uh, to, you know, people in education, um, to just business owners on Beverly Drive. So it's like, we, we really have a great outreach here. And here's some pictures from just some of the events that we've had. And I just want to share with you just a little bit about this team because we're, uh, going to be coming up on our last two meetings. And I just want to kind of just update you a little bit on where we are with our work. Um, the charge is always very important. We want to stay really close to what we're asking, um, the people that applied, uh, to do. And, uh, we're staying right on target for, um, our last two meetings. And we're reviewing a lot of school data, a lot of school, um, documents and policies. Um, and it's very interesting to get the, the, the viewpoint and perspective from some of our parents and business owners in our community. Um, there just isn't enough time. I, I feel like our time with our panel, it just, it goes by so quickly, but it's just been so beneficial. This is the type of group where there, there's no shy people here. So we really walk away with some great conversations. Um, not always agreeing, but we're always in agreement with our charge, which is to look at our current policies and make modifications, make recommendations to ensure that we're doing everything that we can do, uh, to provide wraparound services because we truly believe that we share our kids, whether they're in our schools or they're home at night or somewhere on a weekend. This is just a list of the things that we have expected our team to look at and review. And, um, this is, um, just hundreds and hundreds of pages of documents. And our team steps up, we give homework, they complete that homework, they give feedback to us. And so it's been really robust, uh, the conversations. Um, and they've really challenged us as administrators to think differently about what we're doing and how we're doing it. So some of the outcomes that we've had, we've had an opportunity to, uh, to, to talk about and share some of the restorative practices that we're doing in our schools, um, the actual discipline that's happening, um, PBIS and, and how that fits. Um, we're really looking at not just those things kind of in a vacuum, but, but the unique parts of our community, um, that, that somewhat change things, um, in how we handle things. And so having people from the community speak about their own kids and the greater school community has been, uh, just, just great input for us and great feedback. There are partners in this room. There are no personal agendas. There are people that come in thinking one way and they leave thinking about a, a different perspective, and they've said that on the way out. Um, I want to thank Chief Stainbrook, who, uh, hosts us every Monday that we meet at the police station. Um, this last meeting that we just had, we had Captain Subin, uh, talk about the juvenile diversion program. Uh, and again, we're talking about that some of the students that make a poor decision in the community and what they're doing is reflective of some of the things that we should be doing. And through the juvenile diversion program, they wish that they could do more and service more kids through this program. But it's that intake process again, where you're able to look at a, a student and their family and what kind of resources that they need. And it was great last night. The, the epiphany last night at our meeting was just the fact that the police department wants the same thing that we want, and that is that we want our students safe, we want our students to make good decisions. But we also want to have this opportunity where we're able to provide that assistance where it's needed, whether it's in counseling or whether it's, um, you know, in a different area about decision-making, um, or just something that the family might need. And so it was interesting to listen to Captain Subin last night because, um, you know, a lot of light bulbs in the room. You know, people were thinking, oh, my gosh, this, how could a program like this connect to what we're doing? And what it comes down to is that we're community partners and we want our kids to be successful. We don't want our students to be, um, you know, placed in a position where, you know, they do something wrong and, you know, that there can't be improvements in the future. Um, we all want to be partners and, and, and take that responsibility that we have and teach our students and change behavior, um, but keep the student as the center of, of our discussion. And so, um, we looked at a lot of themes last night. Uh, we're getting ready, um, uh, to move forward now into the final recommendation area. We've looked at, and you can see these are some conditions, some cause and effect type, uh, conversations that we're having. Um, we want to be able to articulate what the problem is. And so we spent a lot of time looking at our policies now because we wanted to ensure that, you know, we weren't having conversations about things that are already in place. And to be quite honest, it put us, it puts us in a vulnerable position as administrators. And it's one that I, I like. I, I like to be challenged in that way because getting input from people that are not educators has really helped us look at what we're doing in a different way. So we're looking at what the problem is. We're also looking to see what kind of key findings, some data behind, uh, some evidence behind the problem so that we can work together to, uh, you know, find that root cause and then make the difference that we need to make, um, that hasn't been done in the past. So the recommendations are coming. Um, I talked earlier about, uh, this important meeting that we have on July twenty-fifth, which is an opportunity where we have our, um, our communication planning loop that we have with our Board of Education, uh, with our strategic plan. And so, uh, the board has, uh, been open and willing to listen to these recommendations that we are receiving from our community group so that we can sit down and we can look to see how this fits into our strategic plan. And this is a lot about our board. It says a lot about our community and our cabinet team, uh, that they're willing to do this. I mean, to put something in a strategic plan makes it real and it makes us accountable. And I was very pleased to know that the board was willing to have this conversation with us. Um, it was that important to have this conversation and talk about how we can make this so that we are accountable for making these changes. So, um, the recommendations will be coming in. We have, uh, actually two more meetings that will be occurring. Uh, the next one will be July tenth and then July seventeenth. Um, also at our next meeting, um, because we've been meeting at the police station. That's piqued some interest and some curiosity about their, um, Real-Time Watch Center, which is, uh, very much like our command center that we have here. So we're excited to be able to have Chief Stainbrook kind of walk us through what that looks like uh, because we have just a few feet away in our command center, many, many of the same things that the police department has. Um, and then there's our, uh, meeting on the twenty-fifth. So I, I'm really excited to be able to, um, uh, have this conversation with the board and receive these recommendations. And this team is hard at work, um, already starting to put these recommendations together. I just want to end with, I had a conversation with, uh, Sophia Lifson today, um, who is going to be our new student board member. Uh, and she will start sometime in July. Um, and I'm really excited to be able to welcome her along with the rest of our Board of Education. Uh, one of the best parts of my job is that I get to work closely with our student board members. Um, and, uh, as we gave Alex a lot of accolades, uh, that she well-deserved. Um, what's nice every year is you get a different student board member with a different personality and, uh, you know, a different view on, uh, the, the journey that they're about to embark upon when they join this dais. Um, but I had a great conversation with her. We're going to go and have some coffee and, uh, talk about what this experience is going to be like for her. So just an official welcome to Sophia, and then you will be seeing her sitting right up here very, very soon. And that is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bergy. Colleagues, any, uh, quick comments?
Um, uh, thank you, Michael, for your report. I just want to compliment you and commend you on the advisory committee. I think it's being run so, it's so well-organized and well-thought-out, and I love reading reports about it. And I've only heard positive feedback from everybody that's participating in this program that you've put together. And I, I really appreciate it, and you should be commended for it. And I also appreciate your relationship that you formulated with Chief Stainbrook and that that has enabled you to be able to do this program with him. And it's really a, a testament to the relationships that you've been building. So thank you.
Thank you. And again, a shout out to Chief Stainbrook, who's been there every minute of every meeting that we've had. He's made it a priority.
No, just thank you for your, for your report as always. Um, the behavior committee sounds great, and I appreciate your time and everyone's. And I very much look forward to the July twenty-fifth presentation so that our families, our community, and all of us can, you know, know that the recommendations will be implemented starting from the fall. So it's happening. Thank you.
The timing's great. Thank you.
I want to ditto the words of, uh, my colleagues, and I just want to thank all the people that are on this committee with you and thank them for giving of their time and their, their thoughts and so that we can go forward with some improvements. So I want to thank all of the people that have been participating in that. And I look forward to maybe finding some good results as a result of that with our students. I am planning to read something that I found in the, um, we daily, um, interesting entitled, with this, uh, today, reading the CSBA. And I'm going to read that on my end of the thing. So I thank you again.
Thank you so much. I think that it really speaks volumes of you that, uh, about six months ago, you identified, you know, we have a problem here. And you weren't sugarcoating it. You were directly transparent about it. We have a problem. We need to find, um, we need to take some action. And I think one of the first and most prudent ways to solve a problem is to really analyze it. And I think that, you know, you, you have a great complement of people, uh, from all different perspectives who are able to help you. Not just law enforcement, people who know about, uh, kids. You have parents, you have religious, um, leaders, and the, and that's all really important. Um, one issue or one thing that I would like to ask you how you guys are moving forward with this is that there is the obvious confound of the devices. And that a lot of the bullying, a lot of the, um, poor behavior choices, um, have something in part to do with devices and things that are done, you know, perhaps off-campus. Has that come up? How are you guys tackling that? Is that something that we as a board can look at more closely as far as, you know, use of devices during school time? Because it really is, um, a very central part in this day and age, I think.
Well, it has come up, and, um, you know, one thing that we did talk about is that that could be its own committee. Um, because this is, uh, you know, that, that's a, it's, it's just such a large area, um, that we haven't, we haven't looked at that particular policy to change that policy. It's been more about just the discipline policy. Um, but I think it goes back to some of the discussions we've had about, you know, looking at, um, you know, again, the number of students that, you know, looking at that data, uh, from when those incidents are happening. Um, and, you know, I think it's, it could be a different committee because a lot of that's happening, you know, from our reports and our data in the evenings and in, you know, on weekends. Um, that, I think that's a tougher target to get to, um, you know, when it's outside of school. But, um, you know, it's certainly one that could easily be explored.
Thank you, Dr. Bergy. Um, since this is a community advisory, do you guys have minutes or reports? Mrs. Wells mentioned something about hearing the reports. Is there?
Yes, so it's, um, the information has been, uh, shared like through the, through, I, through emails, through, um, there's, uh, I send a link to each of the meetings with, uh, with also the notes.
Okay. And is that for public consumption yet or not?
Not yet. No, just, uh, just for the board for right now, just updates to the board. And then, um, uh, and then we will be more public when we share our recommendations.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, wonderful. Moving on to our construction project update or, so we call it this giant thing.
All right. Thank you and good evening, everyone. Uh, so, um, what I'd like to do today is, uh, we had, uh, if you all remember, we had a presentation a couple of board meetings ago about our Horseman shades and, uh, uh, the issues we're having there. We're not having enough shades for the students. Uh, so what our team did after we got some feedback from the board and the community, uh, and the principal and PTA is we, I worked with our architect and we put some renderings together. Uh, so what I'd like to do is go through some of the renderings first to show, uh, all the different areas that we, um, would like to propose to have additional shade. And then at the end, uh, I'll ask Rafael to come up and talk about the numbers because he loves that stuff. Uh, so here's a overall site plan of Horseman. Um, this varies a little bit, uh, from the previous site plan that you saw. And I'll go through some of these, uh, renderings as I mentioned. But one of the changes we made is in that, uh, in the running track, we had to allow for, uh, the fire lane, which cuts through it, which basically creates two separate islands with, with trees planted in the middle. We moved the shade structure number four closer to the running track, also to allow for the fire lane. And, um, I recently witnessed the Horseman graduation for the first time. So we believe that this new location will not interfere with the, uh, graduation ceremony. Uh, the other two areas, uh, I'll show you in the next few slides. Uh, so here we have the drop-off, the, the student pickup and drop-off area. Um, what we would like to do here is add a secondary gate. And then, um, we have two options for the area in front of the gate. We either would have, uh, umbrella seating for parents and students to use. So, um, students would be able to use this during the day. And then during pickup and drop-off, this would be an area for, where parents could wait in the shade, uh, while their kids are coming out from school. Um, we would, we would also, like I mentioned, allow the, the students to use the, the space during the day. The secondary gate would still be there along Charleville to prevent them from going into the street. So they'd still be in the secured area. This is a secondary option with a shade in this space instead of the umbrella shades. Basically, what we did here was we just plotted a, a shade structure in the drop-off area. Uh, this also could be used by both students and parents. And, um, that's what it looked like. Now, this, um, in my opinion, might not be the best, uh, use of this, a large shade structure here unless we are able to use it as an outdoor classroom because that, of course, opens us up to other funding sources. So if we could create it and we do like this design, we would have to incorporate the other elements to create a outdoor classroom. This is just, I'll show you just a couple more views of the same area, just from different angles. This is with the seating, and this is with the, uh, shade structure. And then this is a view from outside on the street looking in if it were just the tables and then the shade structure. Uh, here is the play, uh, the playground area and the actual play structure. Uh, we proposed to put these two shade structures over the playground area. This hasn't changed from our previous, um, discussion. We just went and had it made a, a rendering to represent what we were, uh, showing last time. And this is just another view. Uh, and now this is the large shade structure for the play area, the playground area. Originally, we showed it closer to Building B, right in that corner. We moved it out, uh, closer to the running track. And, uh, we feel like this would be the best use of that space and provide the, uh, the best shade for the students. And, uh, once again, I'll just show you a few different views of this exact shade. And now this brings us to the TK patio. Uh, I was out there also right before graduation, and I do see that there's definitely a need for shade here. And, um, our architect came up with this double umbrella shade, which would be- be a little more convenient and less obtrusive to the space by having one pole instead of two poles. And this location we have here, it could vary. We can move it a few feet one way or the other and, but this will probably give us the most shade in this small space that we have here. And I think I just have one more view of the shade. And now this is an aerial view of the running track and the the playground area. So, here's what we're proposing is we have five trees that we wanted to put inside the running track. We're showing that space in the middle of the the trees. That is the fire lane. So, we'd like to keep that and not disturb that asphalt in that area. And also what we've heard from the the staff and the principal is that they they actually would like to have that space there as asphalt. So, we have two separate kind of shaded areas inside the track. And then you can also see the other shade in the background there and that's what we're hoping the the space will look like in the future. And now I'm going to bring Rafael up for his favorite part.
Thank you, Will. And again, just as you all know, this this has come together through a lot of input from community members, from just different partners in regards to how this should look and what will be beneficial. So, you all saw the different sections and you guys have the pictures there, but for the 1A, which is over the shade structure 1A, which is the main entrance, the parents' off-street waiting area for pickup, drop off, including the new additional gate, fence, hardscape and grass. We have a ram of about, over a quarter of magnitude of about $80,000 with a 30% soft cost. So, it essentially would be about $104,000. In regards to the funding source, we were thinking that the best possible funding source for this would be, so this site qualifies for modernization funds. There's still some that were left over for the current qualified amounts. We'd have to apply for those monies and they probably, you probably won't see them for a good three years. So, we would probably need to use our bond funds temporarily and then eventually we would have to get this, we would get this money. So, we're looking at about $104,000 would be the cost funded right now out of the bond, but eventually as we get this money back from applying for modernization dollars, we would essentially reimburse the bond. And I think it kind of runs concurrently with if we start applying now, we would be able to kind of move forward there. Unfortunately, there's not very much right now for the modernization dollars at the site, but it should be enough to cover this section for 1A. As far as the tentative timeline, we're looking at winter break of 2023 as far as when we're looking at doing that. For item 1B, the umbrella shade seating, so six of those at pickup, drop off courtyard area. It's about $3,000 per umbrella set. So, we're looking about $18,000. We're thinking that could be an opportunity for maybe some of our families to look at funding some of that, just different opportunities like that. But again, that's in its infancy stage. I think we could definitely speak a little more about that and, but I think that's definitely doable if one of our families wants to say, hey, I want to donate this specific set. Again, that's for section 1B. Now, for 1C, I just want to reiterate, as we look at this, we we look at it from multiple perspectives. We look at it from the perspective of operational efficiency. We look at it from educational opportunities as well as community desire, right? And when we look at item 1C, the outdoor by the main entrance area, we don't feel that this would be something to recommend at this point. And it's not really recommended by Horace Man or by, as we looked at it as far as the structure, it's, it would cost you about $266,000. We really don't have any funds for it. It would have to be funded out of the bond and we just think that at this point in time, 1C would not be feasible to do. But again, the funding source would essentially have to come from the bond if the board chooses to move forward with that. But now for item two, the shade structure over the play structure, which I think is really needed, that's about $130,000. Again, I think that could also be funded by the new grant modernization dollars, but again, it would be the same process. You would have to apply, we would have to apply for it and then from there, we would have to wait a couple of years, probably a good three years before we see those funds and then we would get the bond reimbursed. The work there, we're looking at summer of 2024. In regards to item three, the trees and reading green in the running track oval that you saw there with the concrete in the middle, essentially that's going to be about $85,000. We are working hard to try to get all this started and done during the summer. There's a lot of work that has to happen in between, but we're working on that. We do have some funds set aside in the MNO budget that could cover that. So, that one hopefully is something that we could just say, hey, let's just move forward. We, you know, although it's in our budget, it doesn't have to necessarily be spent on that. So, ultimately the board would have to, you know, authorize that expense. Item number four is the outdoor classroom by the main courtyard near the colonnades. That is about $266,000. It would include lighting and power and we could definitely call this an outdoor classroom. And we would have to call that an outdoor classroom because we want to use developer fees to fund this. Just keep in mind with developer fees, they're very restricted dollars. You saw, you know, we had a balance there in our ending fund balance during our budget presentation of about 1.7 million. So, we have enough funds to do this, but we have to use it and have to know that it's an outdoor classroom. I'd love to be able to extend that to everything else, but we, you know, it would be very difficult for me to explain to an auditor how like a shade structure over a play structure is an outdoor classroom. And so essentially for this one, for number four, we would look at developer fees to fund it and the work, you know, in summer of 2024. And finally, number six would be the single pole pyramid shade structures on TK patio. That's about $15,000 each plus site work. We're looking at the, you know, the bond covering that as the only funding source that we could find for that. And so that work would be in summer of 2023 pending a over the counter DSA approval. So, that is the financial section of this. And I think that is all that we have. So, we'll open it up for questions.
Are you looking for direction this evening?
Yes. Yes. We would look for directions to approve 1A and for all of these to be approved under their funding source with the exception of 1C, which we were recommending to not move forward with.
Okay. Mrs. Wells.
Okay. So, first of all, I think that in my mind, the number one priority is about providing shade for where the kids are playing and where they're outdoors and that that's really how we started. This is what was really the genesis of this program was to address the shade for the kids. So, in my mind, when I look at this list, to me, and also in, one, we have that as our priority and number two, I think that we want to preserve our our bond dollars as much as we can to finish the high school. And so, so looking at those two things in my mind as priorities is providing the shade, but trying not to spend bond dollars to do so. When I look at this list, that then says to me that I would not give direction to move forward with 1A, B or C because we don't need to do those right now at this time. And to your point, that the shade structure is not necessarily something that's really being requested. So, I would not move forward on 1A, B or C at this time and wait until future dates if we wanted to improve the campus at some future date. With regard to the shade structure over the play area, to me, that's a number one priority. That's an area where the kids are playing and I would like to move forward on that as soon as we possibly can. With regard to the trees and the reading green, I think the trees are going to be providing shade and it's providing them that green space, which is going to address the the number one goal that we were going after at that point and that's coming out of the MNO dollars and I'd like to get that done as soon as possible. With regard to number four, I'm a little bit on the fence with this because of where it comes out of in terms of the budgeting. So, I understand that it provides shade and you can do an outdoor classroom possibly. So, if you can do that outdoor classroom and you can use it for development funds, you know, use development funds for it, I may be okay with that. However, I also would like to preserve our developer funds as much as we can. So, so I would be okay about that, but my next question is for number six, for the TK patio, why can't we put a shade structure like what you're proposing for four there and make that an outdoor classroom? Because you're going to get more shade and it really is an outdoor classroom for the young student, for the young kids and it really will provide more shade and be more effective for them to use that space.
I can comment on the type of shade. So, that umbrella shade is probably more feasible rather than the four post large shade. We could technically make a shade and almost any size, a rectangular shape if we really wanted to, but it would have four poles, which would get in the way of the kids that play in that area. We could do two of these double umbrella shades. That's also another possibility. I just can't speak on the whether or not we can consider it a outdoor classroom. I think we'd have to look into more detail on that and whether or not it needs anything else to be considered an outdoor classroom. Although you're right, it is technically a learning space, so.
Right. And if you can provide more shade there, I think that's even better. I understand it's really hot there for the, for the little kids.
I think we'd have a difficult time calling it an outdoor classroom because of just the area that it would cover. The other areas is significant, it's, it's much larger. It's, it's going to have power, it's going to have lighting. So, it resembles more of a structure that you can bring a class, put tables, have your power, have your lighting. And so, we have those components. For this, it would be difficult just because it really truly serves a purpose of shade. I, I, I could check and see what, if I could get some other opinions, but I, my first thoughts with this is I don't think, I think they would, I think it would be probably called out because again, just the area that it's covering, it just, not having any power and not having any of those functions, I think kind of puts us at a disadvantage there.
But I would suggest putting the power and like you would on the other ones, putting that in that space there. Is it just that the space is too small?
I think it's, it's too small for that to put a bigger structure area and then you would have to do a lot more site work to bring in the power there. I'm not sure if you guys looked into that at all.
But you could use developer funds.
Yeah. I haven't looked at running power to this area, but I assume it'd be coming from almost the other side of campus and we require a lot of, you know, concrete cutting and trench trench work to get power to that. If there isn't power out there.
Right. I mean, if it can't be done, it's just a suggestion is in terms of trying to find the funding so that it doesn't come out of the bond. But if it has to come out of the bond, I'm okay with the structure there because I think it's really a priority area to have. And, and I'm wondering if you want to put two of those, but it sounds like, is, because at one point I thought I saw that there were two of these.
Yeah, there were two shades, but it was actually the same amount of shade because now we combined the two shades into one pole.
Okay. So, then, so my priorities would be to do number two, the shade structure over the play area. Number three, which is the, the track with the reading green and number six with the pole pyramid. And then I'm on the fence about number four at this point.
Thank you, Mary. Judy?
First of all, thank you so much for, to everybody who's put time into this endeavor, really. So informative. Just a couple of questions. So, is it the power and the electricity that is making it an outdoor classroom? Like in other words, you could plug in a laptop?
Yeah, to a certain extent, yes. You'll have, you're able to put power, you're able to put electricity there. And so, you could, you could say that a teacher could come out, you know, plug in a device, put some, it has, it's a big enough space to where you can bring in chairs and or seating arrangements for setting up like an outdoor area for a classroom and it's big enough. You know, a smaller one, it's hard to say, hey, this is also an outdoor classroom. But again, even that, like it's, it's kind of on the fence. So, that's why I want to be very cautious with how we, how we utilize that and it's truly something that could be utilized as an outdoor.
For, for that, item four, let's say it qualifies for developer fees. Could you then after the fact apply for modernization funds and reimburse the development fees with modernization funds?
So, 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 yeah, yes, but it would depend. And, and what I mean by that is, so you have items two and in this proposal, right? You have items two and 1A that we're looking at by, to fund out of the modernization monies that we can apply for. We have enough money to look at both of those. So, essentially what would happen is we apply for these funds. In the meantime though, we need to pay it out of somewhere and the most appropriate use would be the bond because it's, it's that type of project. Now, what would happen is we apply in about two or three years, you know, we would get funding to us deposited into our Fund 35, which you would then move over to Fund 21 as a reimbursement, kind of like what happened now with the seismic funds. So, we were proposing 1A and item two to be funded that way. So, that's, yeah. So, essentially if you tried to reimburse like, you know, if you tried to do that, then you wouldn't be able to do either 1A or two. Now, if you wait till 2025, you'll have some more modernization funding that will open up at this site, but that's not going to happen until 2025. And then for us to get the funds, we're not looking at until like 2028, somewhere around there. So, like it pushes it down. So, depending on what you approve, essentially we have about like close to $250,000 to apply for there. So, that's why we would say 1A and, and two.
Okay. But if we, if we didn't do 1A and two, but for example, if the board approved two and four, it would be the same scenario, which is to use developer funds and then and after the fact, hopeful modernization reimbursement?
Yes, you could do that, but, yeah.
I was just going to, I was just going to say, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we'd rather use developer fees and not have to reimburse the developer fees because this is a good use of those fees and we may not have many more projects that qualify for developer fees.
The major project you have that Mike, that will qualify for developer fees in the future, as of now, is probably just Building C in, at your high school. Other than that, I don't really see too many more out there that could qualify under developer fees. Nonetheless, you know, with the reason why we were looking at 1A instead of like item four to be funded out of, you know, looking at four to be funded out of developer fees instead of 1A is because we feel that four would essentially be a good justification of an outdoor classroom, whereas 1A, we'd have a hard time justifying that as an outdoor classroom.
Understood. And then for six in the TK patio, in the picture, and it might just be the type, the time of day, it doesn't seem like the umbrellas are really hovering over the seating area. And so, it might be that one hour later, the sun moves over and it does. So, I don't want to make any assumptions there, but are we giving, is the intention of placing it there to give those tables as much coverage as possible? And I noticed that there is like an indentation for the tables to be situated there. Is that the only indentation in that patio?
No, there's another indentation on the north side of that patio. So, with this shade, it could go on the opposite side if we wanted to cover those picnic tables or the, the table seating, but I believe, and we can get input from the staff, but I think they wanted more in this play area where the kids are actually playing out there.
Did you have a picture that shows the entire patio? I felt like I saw it somewhere.
This one just had a wider view.
Maybe it's on the site plan.
Yeah, the site plan would show it as well. If you want to show my screen again, please, I can show you. There you go.
While you're waiting for that, I'd just say that if the developer funds for four can be used, then I would be okay with four as well. So, I'm okay with two, four and six.
Three. Me, I am also.
Yes. Two, three, four and six.
That would, the same.
And I don't know where five is, but.
Five is done. Five is done. I'm on the same page, but I actually am curious to know why two. So, here I interpreted it to say in the budget line, item six, single pole pyramid shade, two structures. So, did you mean that there's two umbrellas or two times two, four umbrellas?
Two umbrellas. One pole, two umbrellas.
Thank you. And then was there a consideration to add another one of these structures to the other side to cover the other indentation? And does the other indentation typically include two tables like this one?
No, from what I saw when I was there during graduation, I don't know if it's always the same. the same setup, but it was more open on the, on the northern side there of the play area. It was just kind of an open space. I think they had a pool there when I was there.
Like a water play?
Yeah, so we could have two of these double structures, you know, it's, it's all about whether we can fund it or not, that's.
I would look at doing two because it's.
Yeah, that's.
It's the whole play area.
And then, once we get into, you know, actual design, because these are just schematics and renderings, we could, we'll work with the architect to place these in the exact best location based on the sun.
That'd be right.
Yeah.
I agree. I would recommend two of the single pole double umbrellas.
We could definitely do that, and just to clarify, that's, that would essentially have to be funded though for the bond, which I think is a good use. Just to clarify though, item 1B, we were proposing that one to be family funded or like donation funded, per se? Like, in the sense of, these are actual like tables that cost a certain amount per person, and I think that's something that we could probably work with, you know, just work to do. And I think we could probably raise that that way. Just, I wanted to clarify that that wasn't bond funded. We weren't, we were thinking that would be something that maybe we'd have to initially pay it out of there, but we would reimburse it through the donations that we receive.
Thank you, and it's, I'm not closing the door on any items. You know, in six months or a year, we might be at a different moment in time where we can say yes to more things. But if you're asking me for a roll call on this, I would agree with Mrs. Wells. I would support items two through six, and I would say even 6A and B, meaning the two, the two structures.
I agree.
Okay, well, I am looking at the 1A area, and I find that there's no reason for that gate, for that fence that comes out of the school, which closes off that whole area. I think that is, as far as I'm concerned, it's a waste of our dollars, and I don't see any need for it. I do like the idea of the tables with the awnings over them, and I think that we could put three or, I mean, four of them in that area, and it would probably make a very nice look, leaving it open for people because they're truly, the kids, if they, if that, they can come out of that, this school from that entrance and walk over into that area and just sit down and relax underneath shaded covers. So I, and they could bring out books and read and so on. So that area I think is, if we can get, I mean, the benches cost $3,000. Put six of them in there or four of them in there, I think you'd have a beautiful, they look nice, they have the color of the school, and I think it would look good. So I, I would go for that, only with that much there, and that, I don't want to do the fence. I don't think it, I don't think it's necessary. Number two, the space over the play area, I think is great. I go wholeheartedly with that. I go wholeheartedly with trying to figure out how to cover as much possible as you can with the TK area, whatever that would require in terms of fencing, I mean, for awnings and covering. I would like to address item three, which is the oval track, so to speak. You have these beautiful trees sitting there, and you show nowhere in between them to maybe sit down in the shade and enjoy reading a book or something like that, and I thought that would be the perfect.
Sounds nice. Yeah, actually, we talked about this earlier, Ken and I, we would imagine putting some of those park benches or those, kind of like those, the seating.
Wonderful thing right there. And I also think that in the area around five, which is over there where there's, there's a tree, you could also put some benches in that area that I think would.
I forgot, thank you so much. I got so excited to start to talk about it, I forgot. So I don't, I really think that you could do a lot more with your trees because you've got them there and put them in. As for number four, I look at that and I see that as an impedance on the four-square courts. I don't like that area at all for a classroom. I think it's, it's out of nowhere. You've got the kids playing four-square, you've got these poles that they can run into. I think it could be somewhat dangerous. I personally would not like to see a classroom there. As a matter of fact, if you have enough, I mean, does it have to actually look like a classroom? If you take the kids outside and you're in the area around the front gate, you've got six of those things that the kids could sit at and you could run a classroom there, and the awning overhead, I think you're going to save some money. So I would love to see more seating structures around the trees where people can really take advantage of the shade. And I'm not in favor of number four at all. I don't like where it's located. There might be a chance, I saw something in the diagram where you might be able to put it, there's a big rectangle, let's see if I can find it. There's a rectangle on the field, near, right by the, look at number three and four, or three and, around the running track. What is that big square rectangular box for?
That's just an enclosure, so right where you see there is that fence that's there, that's the entrance, which is the fire lane from Arnaz Street, that's where it comes into the play area.
What do you mean?
You're talking to the left of the number three?
Yes, that great big white, the rectangular box, what is that?
I believe it's a mechanical enclosure, there's equipment in there and.
Okay, well, I had thought maybe if you wanted to make a classroom, you could.
Oh, yeah, it's not.
Huh?
It's not empty, it's drawn empty, but it's not empty.
Okay, all right, well, I didn't know what it was, and so that's why I thought that was, but as I say, I'm not in favor of putting anything where four is, there's a four-square court where the kids can play and, and they, and the trees are nearby, they can go and sit down right near there and relax in the shade, so.
Rochelle, if I can just interject some of the thinking behind wanting that shade structure on that play area, just from talking to the parents, because I didn't understand it myself, like, why are we putting a shade structure there? I think what they were trying to address, whether you agree or not, is that while the kids, like, the older kids are playing in that whole area there where all the four-square and tetherball is, and on the field, and there's no shade for them to play under, and that when it's.
You're not, you're not shading the whole thing, as it turns out, you're only shading a little bit of it, and that they're still going to be playing, and I.
Right, but that was the thinking behind wanting some shade.
As a person who taught physical education on a playground and knows safety, that one does not appear to me to be a safe place for.
So, but that's the thinking for the parents, is that at least there's someplace where they can be playing and there's shade underneath.
You're asking my opinion, you got it.
I don't have much to add to that. I do think that there are, what do they call it, those pads and those weights that you guys add to poles, like soccer poles, I mean, that make it relatively more safe. But I'm all for all sorts of, you know, play structures that can be had, and I, I mean, you know, I think that they can't, they can, like I said, insulate it so that, you know, it's not like a crash hazard, but other than that, I don't have much to add.
Can you let me know what you support on this, because we need to get directions? So which items you're supporting?
So I'd like, also like to mention that from the feedback we got from the staff and PTA, that 1A was one of their higher priorities. Obviously, it relates to the drop-off area and also for the kids and for the parents. I just wanted to make sure we.
I'm not saying that we shouldn't have that drop-off, I just don't see any reason for that fence.
So the secondary fence that we're adding, they, the idea is, during the day would stay open, of course, the gate would stay open, but when it comes time for pickup and drop-off, that provides a barrier so the parents aren't just walking onto the campus.
They're going to be stopped outside anyway. They're stopped at the outside gate.
Yeah, it was meant for a waiting area for them during the drop-off and pickup.
Money not to spend.
Thank you. So my, my feelings are this. I think if there's other possibilities for those modernization funds outside of, you said there's about $250,000 available in that, do you have any other plans for those except for this campus?
No.
Okay.
But in the future, again, you can do other things that you might need, but, yeah.
So it's always avail, if we don't use the 250, the other amount will be available to us?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I do support, I agree mostly with Mrs. Wells, I support two and three and six. I support doubling up on those pyramid shades for the TK. I support the, the gate, I support 1A, but I don't support four. And I don't, my thought about the outdoor classroom is, is if we did want one, we should incorporate it into actually what's listed as 1C. And that way you have, you cover both your shaded gated, shaded and gated parent area, and it also doubles as an outdoor classroom because there's no sense doing that twice. I agree with Mrs. Marcus, I don't like number four, I don't like where it's placed, and it's in, it's inviting possible injury, and it's also inviting a lot of maintenance issues because if you do pad those poles, you're going to have to replace them. And it's just going to be more and more and more upkeep. So I'm not a big fan of that. So right now, I'm hearing clear directions for two, three, and six doubled up.
And I'm okay letting go of four because I was on the fence about it.
Okay, I do want to bring up, I do want to bring up number, number 1A, the gate for the parent, we don't have support on that. Okay, all right, so we'll go forward with two, three, and six, doubled up six.
By the way, I think that they might be willing to take tables there in the overheads to just, because at this point, there's nothing there right now at all.
In the entry area?
Just that area to put in tables with things.
But we don't, that actually doesn't have to be up to us at that point, it could be a site move, and that's, and we can keep, we can wash our hands of that.
I agree.
Because they, because Horseman does have umbrella tables up on the top of those steps, like, in that whole area. Plus, they also, the kids do pick up shade in the afternoons from those buildings, yeah. So we have to, that's another thing, you know, there is, there is shade, it's a, it's a big building, so also study kind of where the shade falls, and especially in that, in that number one area, we have a building right to the west of that area, so probably half the day you are getting shade in a lot of that area.
I, I would like to request that we try and get this done as soon as we can. I don't know if it's possible for two, what is the numbers again, two, three, and six? Is it possible to do it this summer?
So three, we could, we're running to do, to do that now. Six, we do think we could do that if we get the DSA over the counter. The other one.
Two is going to be longer. Yeah, two would definitely be longer because it involves more design and DSA review wouldn't be an over-the-counter.
Okay, as much as we can, you know, we can fast-track it, or make it a priority because I don't want to spend more money on it, but I know that, you know, this conversation came up from Horseman parents in the fall of last year when it was really hot. So we're going to be back in, when we get to August, September, it's going to be really hot. So to the extent that we can mitigate that in time for the hottest time of the year, that would be great.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, so let's move over to Elrodeo.
Just one more question, so two, three, six, what about 1B? I wasn't clear on.
There was no direction, there was no support for any of the number ones. I mean, there, there wasn't majority support.
Right, can we clarify, we've turned six into 6A and B. Please.
Two structures. Yeah, and then, I know what you're saying about 1B, but I think doesn't that fall under, if that's kind of family-funded, site-oriented?
That would be something the site would work with.
They can, they can do that. I think they could do that, and they should connect with the BHEF for naming opportunities.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Elrodeo.
Thank you.
They're not going anywhere that way.
Yeah, we're not, I'm not going anywhere, at least.
You can stretch your legs, Mr. Guzman.
Mr. Solari, would you like to come on up? All right, so now we're moving over to Elrodeo. Elrodeo, we have an update on the soccer field and more specifically the pricing and the layout, but the first thing I'd like to do is kind of just review the updated rendering that we had put together that reflects all the changes we've made so far. As most of you have known from previous study sessions and board meetings, our main topic of discussion has been the soccer field and making it larger to allow for additional AYSO programs. Originally, the field we had wouldn't even qualify for a 10 and under field, so in partnering with AYSO, we came up with some different ideas and ways that we can work with this space, and the, the final conclusion we were able to come up with is a space that would allow for 10 and under soccer play on the large field going side to side, and then also, I'm sorry, 12 and under on the large field, and then 10 and under going vertically to 10 and under fields as well, cutting that field in half. Also, just other changes we made in the site, just to give you a brief update, is we relocated a play structure there to the right side of the soccer field. We made it closer to the kinder area. We added, there's umbrella shades over those play structures. We also modified the hardcourt area, which is the three basketball courts, and then we added two half courts. So we went from, basically, we originally had two basketball courts, and now we have three and two halves. We also, and all we had to do with that area is just move some four-square courts and the tetherball and ball wall area, but we kind of just rearranged everything to make it work.
Can they be modified to volleyball-type size also, or will there be arrangements for volleyball on those hardcourt basketball?
I think we can provide the striping. I'm not 100% familiar with the size of the volleyball.
But it wouldn't fit in there, I mean, with poles, to put in poles.
For the net?
That's a good question. We could do that. Would be something we'd be doing after the fact because the hardscape's already in place.
I believe BV has that structure with basketball and volleyball, so.
And then also, the last thing is, you can now see the updated parking going around Elrodeo for the teachers and staff. So now on to the specifics of the, oh, this is just another view of the site, an aerial view of the site plan. Actually, another thing I didn't mention is, we provided as many trees as we could in all the common areas, so as, as you're walking up to the admin building here, there's trees lining both sides of the walkway, and also in front of the administration building, we have several trees in this, in that area here. There used to be these small pome trees, we changed them out to larger trees that will provide more shade, and there's also the existing trees that are still there. So there's as much shade as we can put in the actual dirt areas, we have put those trees there, or they were already existing. And now I'm going to let Amin talk about the changes we made with the soccer field.
So, good evening, board members and Mr. Superintendent. So as you know, the portion of this work was done based on the original design, so there are some demolition involved, so they need to do some regrading. This is like the volatile item that needs to be done to accommodate these new changes, mainly on the soccer field area. So again, there are some hardscape and drainage system that needs to be demolished, there are some curves that are already built that needs to be demolished. The area needs to be regraded to accommodate that soccer field, there are additional grading and some changes in the elevation of the existing graded area that needs to be redone. Artificial turf has underground drainage system, and to connect and extend that, that's additional work, and it's, in surface may not look, but it's extensive work that they need to do to basically extend it underground drainage system that's already in place. Reconfiguration of the hardscape, we talked about it, and we are also, one of the requirement was to accommodate power outlets around the soccer field, and as part of this process, we are adding infrastructure to bring in power to the soccer field area. Also, deletion of the bleachers was part of this that was discussed before, but in order to do this, we need to get rid of the bleachers that was part of the original design. We asked Provis to price this, our current list is that contractor, and at the same time, we asked a third-party contractor to provide the price. And at the same time, we asked a third-party contractor to provide the price. Initial price that we got from Provest was lower than the third-party price. We reviewed and commented on the price. There were some items that could be adjusted. So the first price from Provest was 718. After review, we brought it down to 625. We further negotiated that after reviewing and cut another like $24,000 from that. And we also considered the credit for the bleachers that was part of the original design. So all that together, the price for all these changes is gonna be short of $500,000, like $498.
Is this, this doesn't reflect the contribution that would be made by AYSO to do this?
No, this is their direct cost.
That's just the straight cost?
Yes.
And if I can, I can't quite, was it 350 that they were willing to put in for this? So that's fantastic, really fantastic. I think that's wonderful. I have another question, just once we finish talking about this, I want to go back to the plan because I have a question about shade, actually, if we could go back to, after everyone has their comments about the soccer field. But I'm all for this.
Are you looking for direction tonight or is this just an update?
Technically, this money is gonna be charged to the contingency that's already part of the,
The lease leaseback.
This is just an update?
Just an update.
Okay.
And we already authorized them to move forward, basically, not to make any delay on the project.
I just want to make sure my board comments appropriately.
Yeah. And then, I just like that. And then, at our next board meeting, assuming we're, are given direction to proceed, we'll be bringing the contingency allocation request to the board.
So you are looking for direction to proceed?
Yes. And then, at the next board meeting, approval of the CAR.
So let me speed that up and then my colleagues can go into their other issues. Is there anybody that is against proceeding? Great. Thank you.
Wait, I ask a question.
You can still ask a question. I just want to get that issue.
But you have direction.
But you have direction from at least three. Now we can go ahead and do questions and comments. Go ahead.
So for my questions, can we go back to the site plan?
The rendering or the site plan? Which one do you prefer?
Either one. That's, actually, go back to the other one. Between A and B, I believe that's TK? I get, that's an outdoor area for TK?
Yeah. That's a courtyard area, yes. Below unit B is the TK area.
Oh, I see, in front of it?
Yeah.
Do we need to consider shade in between A and B or will it be shaded enough?
Probably, I mean, it's a pretty tall, building, A is pretty tall. That courtyard is probably gonna get mostly shaded throughout the whole day. And that's maybe high noon, you might see a little sun. But it would be shaded.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I also want to add, like normally adding shaded structure between two structures creates complication with DSA. There are certain distance that you have to be from each one of those buildings to consider this as a stand-alone structure. Otherwise, you have to, like sometimes I have seen that you end up adding even like fire sprinklers to a shaded structure. So I just want to bring that up. That is not really easy thing to add shaded structure in the middle of two existing buildings.
And outside of B, where you have, I think is a garden, do we need to consider any shade structures over there other than what's over the playground? I just wanted to ask that now.
Yeah.
Not the garden part.
The community garden, but there are trees there and they're actually existing trees. We were looking at them today. They're pretty substantial. There's,
Okay.
There's a good amount of shade there.
Terrific. Well, I appreciate all the changes that you made from when we, when we first met and looked at this. It's really, I think it's much improved and I'm really excited about it. So thank you.
Thank you so much. The attention to detail and the refining is fantastic. I appreciate it. In terms of timing, is most of this DSA over the counter so that it can be done by this time next year?
Yeah. We, there's very little DSA review except for obviously fire access, which hasn't changed. We're pretty much doing a CCD B for this, which doesn't require.
The access part is an A, but CCDs are a different mechanism, it's not over the counter. So technically, it doesn't impact the completion if that's your concern.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, I just want to ask, what are the, what are these little red lines up the walk? And what do those represent?
Those are brick pavers.
The what?
Brick, brick pavers. So they're just, it's just a sidewalk and in between the concrete, there's bricks that are laid. It's kind of like an accent piece. Could also be possible funding opportunity for BHEF if they want to put their names on the bricks.
Are they laid yet?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to ask a little bit about the regrading. So I guess in terms of cost for that actual piece, is that a significant cost? Because it seems to me like, I mean, I know that that's a pretty common thing. You know, parks are regraded regularly. And I would think that it wouldn't be that involved, but I could be wrong. Can you speak to that a little bit?
I can, and then Amin can jump in if I missed anything. So the regrading is happening mostly in the corners, along Whittier and then Wilshire. There's kind of a little bit of a berm there where the actual, the ground is raised. So to bring it, what we did is we pushed the fence out to make way for this bigger field. And now we have elevation changes. So we have to cut those berms down, create a flat surface. And then because this is a soccer field with the turf and underlayment, there's a lot of regrading and compaction involved. That's kind of drives up the cost more than just kind of flattening out the area.
How much does that inflate the cost?
Do you remember how much that?
I can look at the brick and I don't remember on top of my head. But it's not necessarily all grading as Will was mentioning. The corner of this was supposed to gradually go down to meet the sidewalk on Wilshire. Now you have to build that up. So they, technically, they have to bring more dirt, compact it. And also, the artificial turf has specific requirements for drainage. So they need to adjust the surrounding gratings, not necessarily just to make it flat, to make sure that the water doesn't get stuck under the artificial turf as well. So basically, it was like more regrading involved on the existing graded areas also. And there were areas that curb was built, they had to just take those out, regrade them. So it's, in the surface, again, it may look just, we are in the, adding some corner, but that corner impacts more and more. It's like a domino effect when you are making a change.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to jump back to those brick paver areas because they are opportunities for fundraising. Two or three of our schools have done that. And I don't know if there's a way, it's, those were done through the PTAs. And I don't know if there's a way to put something temporary and hold it so then you can install. Usually, a certain number of bricks have to be ordered and bought and then they're installed to fill an area. So I just, that should be done in coordination with you guys, but I think it should be done. It's a great opportunity.
I agree.
So, okay. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you both very much for the updates and you have direction on everything. So go and make people happy and,
Thank you.
Play safe and cut down on the risk of skin cancer. Wonderful. Okay. Moving on to number 11, Personnel Services. Can I get a motion on 11A, please?
I make a motion for School Employers Association of California Proposal to Perform Job Description Revision.
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Wells and Dr. Stern. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Great. Motion carries. Moving on to 12.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-23-2026 Establishing a Special Reserve Fund for Other Than Capital Outlay Projects Sub-Fund for the Technology Refresh Plan 17.1.
I'll second.
Okay. And I just wanted, Rafael, just a quick one-two liner on exactly what we're doing, just for public clarification.
Sure. Thank you, President Margot.
That was one sentence. You got one left.
One sentence, yes. So we are going to just be moving the funds from General Fund to Fund 17 and storing those funds there until we need to do a technology refresh. So that's essentially why we're setting that up.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I'd just say that I'm very much in support of this. I think it's really important for us to have a technology fund and I'm really happy that we're starting this.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Can I make one comment slash question, though? In favor? I just would be very much interested to know what the fund is gonna pay for and to learn a little bit more about that down the line if possible, especially as we're funding tech for the youngest learners. I'd like to know, what are they using tech for? Why? What's the instructional value and so on?
Sure. We could definitely get that together as time goes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 13A.
I'll make a motion for the ratification of the agreement for the hazardous materials consulting at Beverly Hills High School with Clark, C. Clark Incorporated.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Any questions on this? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to professional and official business, approval of the BHEF naming rights. Earlier this afternoon, the board met in a study session with the BHEF and discussed the new menu of naming opportunities for our community and our district. And it took a good, close look at how to build a more successful naming right program as we just discussed naming some bricks. So we are very much in the mentality of naming things. So on that, can I call for a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the BHEF naming rights.
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Wells and Dr. Stern. Are there any other questions or comments?
I'd just like to thank the BHEF board for putting, working so hard in putting this comprehensive list and program together. I'm really looking forward to the future with, working with BHEF and all of the naming opportunities for our school district. So I really appreciate all of their hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ditto. So much time spent on this. During the earlier study session, I think we discussed some side notes that I just want to make sure are clarified before I forget. Maybe everybody else is gonna remember. And please stop me if you want to make any additions. But I believe that we discussed that the presentation would be supported subject to a 25-year expiration date on all items moving forward other than auditorium chairs, which we were going to pursue as a five-year, more brief term. We also gave them instruction to not actively include Hawthorne at this moment in time since we have Elrodeo and the high school that are coming online and more, you know, newer facilities at Beverly Vista in addition. So maybe we can just leave Hawthorne off so that the public is not confused about those options. Just give me one second. I want to just consult with my notes. I don't want to miss anything.
No, these are good inclusions. Thank you.
Thank you, of course. Yes. Thank you so much. So we also asked if the BHEF folks would go ahead and negotiate. But I think we gave them a dollar amount. Correct me if I'm wrong. Was it 25 or 50K? Anything that came, that comes in over that, I think we wanted to be apprised of.
25.
25. And then additionally, before entering into any agreements, we discussed that there would be a template contract.
Yes.
So regardless of the numerical, the dollar figure, if there's any deviation from the board-approved template, then that document would come back to us for review as well.
That is correct.
I think I got it all.
Yeah. No, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to iterate that what my colleagues have said and I am thrilled that this is now coming to fruition. And we have a very wonderful working, I think, agreement with BHEF. I think this has really been very collaborative and they've worked very hard on this. And I really want to comment them and comment that they did such a great job.
Thank you. Dr. Stern, anything?
Oh, just another thing that we did discuss concerning naming rights is to look more closely at, or look a little deeper in terms of some of the naming opportunities. So, you know, whereas we talk about a lot of different programs at our school, one program in particular that's on the minds of a lot of people in our school district is mental health and well-being. And if there could be something such as an endowed chair for mental well-being or mental health might be, might be of great interest to a donor.
Yes, that is true. The list that we're approving tonight is not a definitive list. It can be amended and added to. The board was clear with BHEF that that is a possibility. Thank you for reminding us of that, Dr. Stern. I also want to thank all of those people who are sitting in the John Cherny Theater. All of those people that have donated and have named parts of our district in the past. Those names are in perpetuity. And hopefully, we can attract people just as generous as them in the future to help support the BHEF, support our students, and get these wonderful naming opportunities out there. So with that said, I will call that to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Wonderful. Motion carries. No opposed. Moving on, and thank you, BHEF, once again. My colleagues iterated that, but it took a while to get here, but we did it. So, CSBA Awards. Dr. Braggy.
So we're bringing back to the board a recommendation for the cabinet. As you might recall, the CSBA Awards fits nicely into our strategic plan when we are looking to recognize the district and district personnel and people that are working hard in our district. And so the Golden Bell Award, we provided those categories to you and with some recommendations from the cabinet. I kind of listed them. I put it out to the cabinet. Those were kind of the top three. And then I added a couple more for your consideration. But that is how we think that we have our kind of best shot, if you will, at providing all of the support work that goes into, you know, these proposals.
Okay. So we're just gonna focus on the Golden Bell at the moment. So I'll go around, see if anybody has. On the last page of our, the board member questions and answers, is the list that Dr. Braggy is speaking about? If you need that in front of you. It's also in the packet handout as well. So if you need a hard copy, please have that in front of you so you can refer to it. Understanding that the Golden Bell allows up to three submissions. Only one submission from one district is actually awarded.
Correct.
So we want to put our best foot forward. And obviously, this is a year-over-year thing, so we can always reapply in following years. But if anybody has any specific comments for Dr. Braggy on how to proceed because the applications, we have to approve it tonight.
Right.
And applications are due at the end of the month.
Correct.
So we do want to get this approved. It has to be approved in order to be a recognized submission. So, but I don't, I think we can do the three categories. We don't have to do the specifics, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we're looking at the numbers, one, two, three, four, or five?
Correct.
Okay? And we have to give direction for him to do three of those, if we want.
Were your top recommendations, is this in order of your?
Yes. This is, when the cabinet, when I put this out to the cabinet and received feedback, this was, this is in the order of people that did contribute back, that this would be the order.
What about more suggestions of things that could be included in here? People on the board can add to these that may, they may think of something. And I think that that should, if we have, I don't know what the deadline is, but that might be something to.
So what I was thinking about doing was, after we received direction for the top three, because I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't do less than three. We could easily do more. But then I would send that out to our board for you to get, you know, an opportunity to give us some input on what you'd like to see in there and just get your perspective.
When you do submit these, like it says, the CTE Showcase Capstone Event, will you put information on there, what that is, a flyer or something so it illustrates, it gives them an idea of what that was all about?
They do allow downloads, I believe, in the application process, but I think it's limited to what.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Each one is a little bit different.
But I'm just thinking about how we can support some of these statements that are here. Is that what you can do, is what I'm asking?
Oh, yeah. This is, we're pretty creative when it comes to.
I know we are. I have no doubt about it.
But anything that we can do, like if there's video, I mean, just even from fashion alone, from culinary, from Master Chef, like there's so many things that are from a visual perspective. I mean, and thanks to KBEV too, because KBEV has covered so much of this, you know, as well as their own program, that it just fits nicely. It's certainly our strongest area.
Should we also mention that our own Mary Wells is going to be submitted for the vote?
Separate category. Separate, separate category. We'll get to that in a second.
On the agenda.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
It definitely looks like CTE, of course, we'd have a real strong case to submit in that one. And I see you listed that first, but I really feel like, you know, you guys could make a great case with visuals and, you know, robotics and...
Definitely.
So what I'd like to do to keep this organized is go through and give me your top three, each of you, and then we'll, whatever, whatever gets the votes goes forward.
Okay.
Okay?
I like all of these. So my feeling is that what your top three is that, that you feel is the strongest candidate, I support.
Thank you.
Same goes for me. And you guys know I always have an issue calling out something that's good, because I feel like I'm not doing justice to all the other, you know, programming that we have. And so all I'll say is that for items four and five, I would love to see those offered for next year, please, if possible.
Sure.
I think we'll be ready for it.
I, I like to think of this as, you know, that we haven't done this in the past, and how much, just such missed opportunities for our district that we haven't submitted before.
I'm just going to go back for one second. I would go with your top three here, but I also wanted to remind you that we can also submit for Laco. And they, they're, they're taking submissions right now, and I think we should also be doing, whatever you do here, I think you should also do for Laco, and, and if there's more that we want to do. But I, I'll get you the date for Laco, but they, actually, Naomi contacted me about it. So I think we should definitely be submitting.
After that Laxton meeting, we should be in.
Mm-hmm.
Gave them a good dinner, good evening.
Yes.
It was beautiful.
Right. There's some silly little Superintendent of the Year award, which is due on the 21st.
Yes. I mean, if you're going to put the work, if we're going to put the work together, we should be submitting it.
Okay.
Right?
Okay. So first two colleagues are leaving it to your discretion. Dr. Bregge, Michelle, anything?
Same. No, no change.
Okay. Dr. Stern?
Yeah. I think I, to their discretion, makes a lot of sense.
Okay. I would only say I think that our, our safety program, our school safety, might be more enticing than the social, emotional health wellness, because as you note, there are numerous schools providing these services that some of us, we have. I don't know if it will set us apart enough. So as you dive into a little more, I think you might want, because I think our security is cutting edge.
I think that, we, we spent some time on this. In, in the program definition is what, it, it really kind of, you know, it, it moved away from this, a lot of the security piece to the culture piece and, and assessments of, you know, students, you know, that, that type of survey, like, you know.
Okay.
It's, it's a little bit, it, if it was more in the security area, I would say that that, but I, but I think that they may get us on some areas in that definition.
So then according to my colleagues, we're going to go with the suggestions and the three categories: Career Technical Education, Professional Development, Teacher Recruitment, Social Emotional Health and Wellness. So I do need a motion to approve that application.
I'll make a motion.
I will second it.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great. That carries for the CSBA Golden Bell Awards, that we are approving those three categories.
Awesome.
Okay?
Thank you.
Same thing. Now we'll go through the Golden Gavel, which is the Board Member of the Year and the Governance Team of the Year. And I don't see any other governance teams around here. So, 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 and then we have the practice, which we would like to implement, of doing the immediate past president as our, as our annual nominee, because I think it's a great way to have a nominee show some depth in their service and accomplishments. So I need a motion for the Golden Gavel to nominate the...
I will make a motion for the Golden Gavel to nominate Mary Wells as the candidate for President of the Year. Past president.
And our, and our board.
And our board.
You're doing them both. Okay, governance.
I'll second.
Great. Any other discussion? May the best board member win. Good luck with that, Mary. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I would just also recommend that we look into the Laco, because you may be able to do security for Laco.
That's a great idea. And I, I just received, I don't know what they sent you. I just received the only one about Superintendent of the Year, so I didn't get the other one.
Superintendent of the Year, and then the cabinet, all the cabinet members.
Did they send that to you separate?
I actually just got a call from Naomi.
Okay.
Saying you guys should do it.
Did you guys get anything?
I, I need to look back at the, to see if there's a specific...
I might have an email on it, too.
We'll find out. I'll take a look to see if that has to be agendized as well as an approval. So we'll get that on as well.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Great. You have direction and approval, and it's official.
Great. Thank you, everybody.
And now finally, after waiting the whole meeting, public comment, David Lucky. Come on. Thank you, sir.
Hello?
Hi.
How's it going?
Good.
How are you?
Thank you for waiting.
Thank you for your patience.
I'm getting it first.
You will have three minutes.
Great. Thank you, guys. Let's see. Am I working? Come on. I'm, I want to thank you first for having, let me have the opportunity to speak here at this meeting. I've only seen you on Zoom, so it's nice to see you in person, to thank you guys for all the hard work you do. I know it's, there's a lot that goes into making this district special. I am somebody who has been a member of Beverly Vista K-38 before it was a middle school, high school, so, and my mom's been a teacher for 30 years here. So I'm all about this district. I think it's a great place. I'm so glad my daughter's part of it. The reason I'm here tonight is I'm here on behalf of the future kindergarten parents of Horace Mann. And we are here to talk about, well, twofold. One is, when Bugby first took us through the orientation and the tour of the school, it was a fabulous tour. And one thing that was mentioned that we all kind of liked originally was that in kindergarten, we had a very unique, that birds and owls schedule, which was that, you know, obviously, some of the students in the kindergarten would start at 8:30 to 1:00, and then there'd be a scattered schedule, scattered, yeah, staggered, sorry, staggered schedule from 9:30 to 2:00. And then, near the end of the school year, a random message came through about two weeks before the school end that the schedule was changing completely. And even though that's been going on for years, and had been very successful to help with reading development, to give those kindergarten teachers in similar one-on-one time with half the class, that hour, extra hour a day, it sort of just went away, and no one knew that was going to be going away, and no one talked about it. It just disappeared. And so it left a lot of, I know a lot of the parents started talking about, were a little shocked and taken back, like, well, why did that happen? So that's part one, is we were curious why that happened, and how it happened, if there was a need for it to happen. And two, is that since that might just have to be the way things are, we think it's mandatory that kindergarten receive, each individual class receives a full-time aide to make up for that lost hour. So those teachers still have an opportunity to give a little more one-on-one time with the students in that class, even though they had, because they lost that time by losing the hour on each end. And I know that'd be a really important thing, because I know it was really touted as developmental for reading and giving the kids that chance with the student. And when there's one teacher in a class of like 26 kids, it's hard to get that time. And so that extra hour on either end really worked well, apparently, because it went on here for a while. So since it might have to go, we just think it's mandatory that we have that. And that's kind of the two points. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do I sit down now, or stand here?
You can.
I mean, yeah.
You can stand.
I mean, typically, we don't answer questions back and forth.
Of course, of course.
But I, but I will say that, you know, the, the schedule is not finished yet by any means, as far as what that day is going to look like. And I can share with you that there is going to be a halftime assistant that's in each of the kindergarten classrooms. So it's, it's not a full-time, but it's an assistant halftime instructional aide.
I see. Halftime being like, like, under 20 hours a week, kind of thing.
Correct.
Like nineteen and a half. Because I know there was a rumor going around that, just speaking with PTA and stuff like that, that they were trying to get somebody like for nineteen and a half hours per class individually. So that is being worked on. Okay.
That is going to be in place for next year.
Okay. Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Going to communication from board members.
Well, I haven't had any meetings since our last meeting, which I'm happy to say. It's been a little bit of a break, so that's been nice. Graduations were really fantastic. So I really don't have anything to report. I just wanted to say that it is Pride Month, and I wanted to acknowledge all of our LGBTQ community, my friends, my colleagues, family members, and to say that I stand with you in your fight for human rights and equality. Thank you.
Thank you. I had the unique experience of attending three graduations a couple weeks ago for my own kids, and it was exhilarating and exhausting. But more than anything wonderful, they were just so joyous, professional, loving, and inspirational. So I just want to send a big shout out to all the admin staff, PTA, eighth-grade committees, fifth-grade committees, and so on, because these were not small things. They were events, and they were productions. And talk about best foot forward. It was amazing. And I'm just very grateful for all the effort and prioritization that went into that. Really, what a, a great way to end the year. The summer is going strong with the camps on our sites, the city camps, the BHEF camps, that kind of stuff. So it's happening, and the, the summer months are relaxing with kids. There is a hustle and bustle of the inconsistency in the summer, too. Moving forward, I'm very much looking forward to participating in my first strategic plan with this board. I'd like to thank all of you for welcoming me in the last couple months. It's been an amazing experience. A thousand questions asked by me, a thousand questions answered by all of you, and Dr. Bregge, and your cabinet, with so much patience and grace. So thank you for educating me and helping me be a better board member, and really looking forward to the 23, 24 school year.
Well, like Mary, I did not attend any meetings. I think there's some coming up, but I haven't been at any this past two weeks. I, every day, we get a, a daily report on our, from CSBA. And I usually try to read the, I read the headline, and then I sometimes go on to read the rest of them, if I find that they're interesting to me, or that they apply to me. There was one today called the, from the USA Today, Behaviors Versus Books. And I, I took an interest in that one, because we're studying behavior right now with our special group. And I'd just like to share with you something that it said. "Three years after schools across the nation were shuttered because of COVID-19, educators say they are still struggling to teach kids skills they lost out during remote learning while managing a surge in post-pandemic behavior, misbehavior. More than 70% of 1,000 educators said in a recent national survey that students are misbehaving more now than they did before the pandemic in 2019." That's a slightly larger share than those who said the same in 2021. "The spike in outbursts, fidgeting, and nonstop chatter in classrooms coincides with a national mental health crisis. American pediatricians during the pandemic went as far as to call it a national emergency. A recent survey from the Pew Research Center found 40% of parents with kids under 18 said they are extremely or very worried that their children might struggle with anxiety or depression at some point." And then the article goes on to say pretty much the same thing. But I found that interesting, because I know that teachers themselves are having trouble with kids in class, period, behaving, not, not mass outside, but they just are having trouble with students in classrooms, getting them to settle down. So I just wanted to share that with you. And I want to thank everybody for everything tonight. I thought we had a great meeting. It went so well, and we had a big, big agenda. And so until next time.
Thank you.
I didn't attend any meetings, but I really enjoyed the graduations. I thought they were beautiful. They were amazing, very well orchestrated. The spirit was really happy, and I was, I was happy to be a part of that. I did attend the pie estha, piesta, what do you, what is it called? At the, pie estha, sorry, at the farmer's market. And at last minute, I was, I was asked if I would be in the pie eating contest. So I couldn't say no, because the mayor, when the mayor asks you to like, eat a whole pie, you're like, so I didn't do very well. I lost, but that's okay. I think it's because it wasn't my favorite type of pie. It was, you know, I like key lime, and it was pudding, but anyway. On another note, I'd like to thank the district for their support of the Pride movement and celebrations. And I see that across the United States, there's bigger-than-ever celebrations and at least acknowledgement that strikes me as how, how things have really changed. I mean, Honda has something going. The buses are, you know, wrapped in, in decal. There's all sorts of, there's a wide swath across the United States that is acknowledging this. And since I went into this position really with the, you know, the interest in, of kids, bottom line, and although I don't know any personally that have come forward to me in this district, you can bet that there are for sure kids who are LGBTA, for sure. And for that reason, if it does give some student or some teenager some hope that they are not alone, that they are acknowledged to some extent, then we have won half the battle, and I'm, I'm happy for that individual. Thank you.
Thank you both for, for bringing up Pride Month. I appreciate it. Mrs. Wells well said. I want to thank KBEV, so I don't forget. It's summertime, and you guys are all here. Thank you. Thank the cabinet that attended tonight. Good to see you, Mrs. Lucky. Our union president, Elena Castanon, thank you for being here as always, keeping an eye on us, reporting back, whatever it is you do. And we, we, we got to attend, most of us also attended beside the graduations, I'll point out, the senior awards and the department awards that we're able to attend since our last meeting. And I think that in, in those sits the crux of what we're trying to accomplish in our district. And I wanted to just bring the attention to those students that achieved beyond our expectations, and those that continue to not only impress us, but impress themselves in their attempts in reaching their academic goals. So with that being said, we will see you in a couple weeks. Meeting is adjourned.